Motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. Under approval of trip to Quebec, there are a couple of little spelling errors and then I have a point. Under approval of trip to Quebec for May twenty fourteen, twenty-eight students are taking French and all are interesting in going, should be interested in going. And under the part-time bookkeeper section, he, the second line, he is bringing it forwarded again, so it should be forward again. But this is the section that I have to point on. We had had a discussion where I pointed out that two years ago when we were audited, the business function was audited by the state. This was flagged as a need by the audit team, and I think that it's important when we add the position that it be captured in the minutes. And I think that's it.
Okay. I ask for a motion to approve those edits.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of, I'm sorry, November twentieth, twenty thirteen with, as amended.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All in favor, any ayes, none passes, none nothing. Next up is the superintendent's report.
Yes.
Garrett, Representative Garrett Bradley and Senator Robert Hedman are destined to be here depending on traffic. So that's what those three seats are waiting for, so I would ask that if either, if the committee approved a change in the agenda to allow them, when they arrive, to go directly through the agenda upfront.
I'll make a motion to rearrange the agenda to accommodate the senator and representative's schedule.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five nothing passed. So we'll go to superintendent's report policy.
Yes, thank you. So we made a change for the second read. I didn't actually put the sentence in the first paragraph, I embedded it down below into the made a third paragraph to cover what the request of the committee was.
Which goal are you talking about?
Hmm?
Which goal?
Not goals, we're on the, we're on policy.
Goals.
Well, so.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
So you embedded it in that which?
The third paragraph.
Third paragraph.
Okay. Instead of putting the first paragraph, I did it in the third paragraph.
Yeah, I see.
Is that okay? That's great, any questions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'd ask for a motion to approve the enrollment of the children's school department personnel. It is written.
A motion to approve the, the policy of enrollment of the children's school department personnel, JBCA.
Yep, go ahead.
I just have one request, could you read the policy so?
Oh, sure can, yeah. Enrollment of the children's school department personnel, in addition to those children who as a matter of law are entitled to enroll in the public, in the Cohasset Public Schools, the children and personnel who are permanently employed full-time in the Cohasset Public Schools may at the sole discretion of the superintendent's schools be admitted, provided the superintendent determines that there is space available and that the student vol meets all the eligibility requirements that apply to students who reside in Cohasset. Enrollment applies only to those program services that are provided within the Cohasset Public Schools. If the superintendent's school determines that a student has needs that cannot be met within existing program in Cohasset, the parent or guardian of the parent, guardian of the student involved must secure the services from the community in which the child resides. Fiscal prog- prog- problematic. Progra- programmatic responsibility of outer district placing will adjourn pursuant to relevant state federal laws that benefit as well only so long as student's parent or legal guardians permanently employed by the student, by the Cohasset Public Schools. Students enrolled during the two thousand thirteen to two thousand fourteen school year will have the above provisions applied to their attendance, but otherwise may remain in the district until graduation or until their parent or guardian is no longer employed by the district. Students who are enrolled pursuant to this policy are subject to all rules and regulations applied to other students in the Cohasset Public Schools.
Get all that? I did, I just wanted to make sure if you could work, so thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Is there, there is a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye. So, um, one of the things that we had talked about addressing this meeting is the calendar for the two thousand fifteen sixteen year, and because this is what we're having, I can't meet until Friday, two days after this meeting, that would be one very fine reason for asking to move it off till next week. We want a chance to speak, but the other reason I will also put out there is that we were speaking with the town manager today who said that in all likelihood during the two thousand sixteen year that the town hall will be under renovation and voting will need to be moved to the school base. And so we're trying to align our full day professional days with the voting days in order to make it easier for everybody. So we just rode over to town hall today to get the voting days so that we'll have a better idea for next week when we present the calendar and shift days in accordance, really it's gonna have to do with the voting days. And we're gonna have to work with the town manager on that, 'cause he figured it wasn't a school year fifteen sixteen like, he just said the year of two thousand sixteen, so we're really looking January to December as that time, but the town hall might be off limits. As far as finding offices and where they need to work and workplaces, that's not anything that we have to worry about, but the voting we do, because it's a presidential election year as well, so that is one of your larger turnouts. So we wanna make sure we have parking for everybody. So when we come back next week with the calendar, most assuredly we'll have those dates in place to help us determine some of where those full days need to be. So I did wanna update the committee on that. Also.
Sure, sure, were there other, the, the federal election, there probably would be.
You'll have a town election?
Probably a town election, there'd be probably, um, also any of the, um, the other ones, um, um.
Well, there's a special town meeting.
Special time here.
About that, so you'll have November, April, October.
Well, a special town meeting is always helpful here.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Doesn't usually weekend or.
Big one will be the presidential one.
Right, in November, that's gonna be huge. Yes, so.
And the, and the primary election as well, probably.
Yes, in the spring, so Mrs. Demas and I have started to, you know, think about what that would have to look like, but at least I'm letting the committee know that since we have been put on notice of the two thousand sixteen year.
Did you see how long it last?
He just said the two thousand sixteen school year, so, you know, because we're putting it into place now, I, we're going to hear when the election dates are, and we'll build some of the calendar around those election dates.
Twice as long as scheduled.
I mean, we have some full days in there fortunately. You know, the very worst thing is that it would all happen at the high school, and it would happen in the gym, and the gym would be shut off and entrance and exits from gym only, but we'd rather have it that the professional day take place here in the district and try to do it on those days, so we have to see how to shift days without extending the year because we have to, you know, create days, that's what we don't wanna do. So that's what we're in the process of doing, we're obviously sure that one will happen in November and that one will happen, I believe it's the first Saturday in May, is generally your, your standard town one, and then we're not sure what the other one was, but we've written over to town hall and we'll have that information tomorrow and then build. So we'll try to get that calendar out to you.
Yeah, Senator Hedman is, is here?
Yes. Has it stopped mid-sentence to say, would you like me to continue and wait, or do you want to start down?
Senator Hedman, would you like to join us, or?
Uh, my understanding is Representative Bradley is running a little late, I'm happy to wait for him, even though last year he waited for me.
We're giving you the option.
What's that?
We'll give you the option.
We'll give you the option, yeah.
But you can sit down.
Yeah, have a seat though.
You're real, you're, you're gonna be sitting right over here. Right here.
Eventually.
Yes, you can.
We'll get the front row.
We have a new job for you.
When he sits here and sees me, when he pulls from the parking lot, sees me here, he's gonna be like, I didn't wait for him.
Say no running fast.
Alright, so are you an middle child? So you were.
The oldest.
Okay. Moving on. The next thing in your packet is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the coordinated program review for the English learner education. It is a draft report of the comments, and we gave you the draft report because if you notice, they list a series of dates, and the date of the onsite visit was January twenty-second, two thousand thirteen, and very rapidly they turned the report over to us on February twentieth, two thousand fourteen. And because it took more than a year to get the report, we don't know how long it will be before the final report comes in, and as a result, we wanna make sure you had this, simple as that, particularly in view of the fact that Mrs. Vellani will be departing from us, we wanna make sure that everything is taken care of. So I gave you the draft report, 'cause essentially this is what's going into the department, there are no changes that need to be made in view of the fact that presently the district does not have any students, limited English-speaking students.
Right, we, Ella, yeah, I read the whole thing, and then I said, okay, I'm reading this nineteen-page document, how many students do we have?
Right. Zero.
So my proficiency rate came as pretty low.
Yes.
In terms of contributing to the student body.
Yes.
I had a feeling.
But.
That, that we've had some years, I know we've had some Russian kids and other different countries represented, so, but.
And we still do.
Yes.
But they've met the criteria not to be in this category at this time.
Right, right, so we don't have people coming in new.
Yes, what I will apprise the committee is the fact that many, many districts will have at least one to many students depending of the district, and of course, the department has been very free in providing lots of free training for teachers in order to re- receive all of the certification and hours they need in order to have these students in their classroom. Unfortunately, that is coming to an end, and we were not allowed to be a part of it because we didn't have any students that qualified. And if you were a district without students that qualified, you were excluded from all trainings. Now moving forward, they'll be contracting and it will be a for-pay training only, which we will then have to essentially, it's an unfunded mandate for us.
Got it.
Because we are going to have to pay for what most districts did not need to pay for, and we weren't even allowed to be a part of.
Oh, wow. That's kinda, so it's, we'll have to take it up with our state.
I brought it up with the commissioner, but it didn't go anywhere. But the other thing, just to understand how that works too, is if a student should arrive in the district, then in a particular grade, and I'll give an example, fifth grade, because dear hill, that's before the transition.
Right.
So fifth grade, every teacher that child comes in contact with in that year, whether it's the classroom teacher, the phys ed teacher, their art teacher, all teachers have to go out for this training. The training is after school, not during, so they don't miss class time, they would have to be paid for that in addition to the paid trainings. And then when the student moves to sixth grade, every two teacher they come in contact with in sixth grade would then have to be trained as well. And each grade they go up, every new teacher has to receive the training each year. So, to give you an idea, so what we're hoping is that as new teachers come in, it's part of their regulars training now as kids are coming out of school, the students coming out, we're hoping that we find some students who are already certified.
Yes, that would be good. Um, question.
Yeah.
Isn't there any way to kind of do a regionalization thing about this? I mean, have people in other schools who are needing to go through it maybe come together if they're in the same place that we weren't, that they didn't qualify either?
We will be looking forward at that, but all of the training that was provided by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is coming to an end.
I realize that, but in the future, if we're in that situation, it would be nice to regionalize with some of the other school districts around.
It, it might very well be, certainly, I'm sure the South Shore Collaborative will move forward for something for us. There are colleges, universities setting up training programs, we just don't know what that will look like yet.
Right. Interesting.
So, but I did wanna share that with the committee, I think, you know, it's, we expected to have a very adverse report because we didn't have any students, instead we had this, so we're returning this to the district, uh, to the department, Laura's already taken care of it and returned it, but I wanted you to see what was in the contents of the report. And I don't know if you have any questions, so.
So, um, I don't see anything that we did wrong.
We did nothing wrong.
This is, this is just citing the things we need to do in case we have students.
Absolutely.
There's no comment about what we did or didn't do.
Right. We don't have to do anything as long as we don't have a student.
Yes, it's just, these are the regs.
Yes.
That's how I read.
And that's how we will build our program if the time ever comes.
Got it. Right, and there are people who are trained as E S L teachers and things like that, that might be able to be helpful to us, and they may meet the requirements of the regs without having to have a whole program.
Correct.
So, there's a lot of different ways about it, 'cause I did a lot of this stuff when I spoke for once.
Yes. Yes. I just wanna make sure that it's clear that this does not obtain foreign exchange students. Absolutely not, no, 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 no.
No, no.
Just, you mentioned Russians, you're not.
Yeah, no, just not, no.
If they're resident of Cohasset.
No, we had kids.
Alright, no, I, I'm aware of that, but I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
We, we've had a couple of kids who've gone through our system who are adopted from Russia, and they came here with no, very minimal language skills, but that wasn't, that, they've already integrated into the system, I guess, and we don't completely.
They've met all the requirements and.
Yeah, that was a number of years, yeah, about five, six years ago, so.
Mm-hmm.
It's cool.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, next up, yeah, the formative committee. Gene was on the committee for the budget advisory group, I would like to reappoint Paul Onyebanyi, if it's in the consensus of the committee, to the budget advisory group, as he was unable to attend the last meeting, so I'd ask that he be reappointed, if it's in the consensus of the committee, according to that statement.
Can I make a suggestion about that? I'm, I was thinking about this after the meeting, and I'm wondering if it might make sense to have that committee have an alternate. So that way, there wouldn't be any confusion if somebody else showed up at the table, and it would be out there that we have an alternate, so there's a potential for someone to sit in. Right.
Okay.
'Cause I read the whole thing about the dispute about it, and this and that, and some people agreed and some people didn't, kind of a waste of, uh, time and effort, so I agree, I think that's okay, too. But it was quite, uh, interesting commentary. Minutes about the meeting. And there's another meeting on Tuesday.
Correct.
And potentially a mod- pro.
So I think being proactive about this is.
Um, would anyone like to be the alternate for the budget advisory group?
I'm happy to volunteer since I have already stepped in the office, so.
And I'd ask if, you know, among all, if there was the alternate for the budget advisory group.
Okay.
That's one. Thanks.
Do we need to vote that?
Uh, we don't.
Is there a point?
Is there a point? And the mid-year polls?
Yes.
You'll have on, in the handout, just on the two hundred polls.
So I did hand you, I keep handing you sets of calls, we haven't been able to get to this. Last year at this time, when we did a mid-cycle, of course, it was a little different because we were under the old rules, now we're under the new rules, I had a large binder for folks if they wanted to come see it, didn't find anybody breaking down my door, and I certainly understand because it was not riveting reading.
I believe that Mrs. Snowdell did come.
She did, she absolutely did, and she looked at it and went, wow. But I wanna make sure that this time it's more of a conversation about the goals. I have some, you know, information to share with you based on what I have here and any questions that you have. I don't know if it's easier if I just start going through them goal by goal, you prefer to ask some specific questions and hopefully I'll have some answers for you, what would the committee prefer? I will jump right in, yes.
Sure.
No response means I'll fill the air. Okay, so under the first piece on teaching and learning about advancing standards-based learning by putting into practice a system of curriculum instruction and assessment that empowers each student to be engaged in challenging academic experiences that are grounded and clearly define standards. When we talk about the teachers, we talk about the students, and then some of these goals will certainly interact. A number of things have been happening this year, certainly the report card has been looked at and adopted down at the lower levels. We're, we're looking and working on the standards-based report card, there are some kinks to be worked out, but overall, we found it to be clear, have more clarity, and perhaps, have you seen one yet?
I haven't, I've gotten sort of negative feedback from.
You did?
Yeah.
Wow, yeah, we had parents working on it.
That's ironic, right? Um, I don't know, it's, it's like a never-ending battle to get it right. The, the feedback that I had from, oh, maybe six or seven people, handful of people, was that, um, it was unclear. It would say, um, you know, Jane is doing this, Jane will be doing that, does that mean Jane needs to be working on it? Or does it mean?
What's coming up.
That all students, it will be coming up for all students, and if the latter, then what does my child need to be working on specifically? So I think just in general, there's a feeling that the report cards don't provide specific kind of actionable relative feedback. It's generic, it gives you no sense of where the, where the child places relative daughters, something to think about. But I know you did a great job assembling a broad group of people to make it work.
Mm-hmm. Well, you know what, best intentions, but if, I haven't been given that feedback, so what I'll do is I'll go back to Mrs. Demas about it, but at least, and we'll go back to the teachers with it, and perhaps the committee that helped with that initially.
The parents' consoles for each, I was gonna do, at least.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. And check in, but that, that's definitely good information to have, and, and I found this year, um, you know, doing rounds in the classrooms have been considerably different than in past years. Teachers are very used to us coming into the buildings. Now, it's not at all uncommon to walk into a classroom with Mrs. Demas, a principal, and myself, and sit down with the students and ask them to explain what they're doing and why are they doing something? And the answers are amazing, the other day, just yesterday, we walked in on a class which overlaps with the technology, but we walked in on a class in the lab in which students were writing for Mrs. Gordon about humanism, and they were reflecting on the statue of David in Rome, which was, the, the content of the critical thinking was very high level. It was very, very impressive how they were thinking. So we feel that the teachers, we've offered professional development, we feel the teachers have certainly taken on the challenge and have offered students those opportunities for the curriculum and instruction. And again, this year with the curriculum, we have put in the Atlas Rubicon for tracking the curriculum and solidifying it so that it's usable to everybody. I've asked Mrs. Demas if she'll come and pay a visit to the committee to talk a little more about the Atlas Rubicon. I think there's been some questions as to its value, and teachers are definitely inputting and writing some very fabulous units. Very impressed. So we're happy about that, and at the same time, we're obviously looking at various forms of assessment. We're looking at what we do with the students at the lower level, middle levels, and upper levels, as well as a vertical connection of how all of that assessment is helping us to progress. We find that scores are starting to rise, particularly in the area of writing. Very happy to see that the, the scores are rising. We also find that in the phonics area that there were some weaknesses, particularly using the DIBELS, we find scores are rising again. And what I did, we do obviously weekly, is we are bi-weekly, I sit with the leadership team and we talk about the curriculum. The areas we talk about are curriculum assessment, instruction, and technology, as well as other issues such as safety, infrastructure, those types of items, what do we need as the year goes on, budgeting and so forth. But I had all of the principals contribute what they've seen this year as a result of our conversations and what they felt to be particularly valuable in their schools. And I also have something on social-emotional that we included as well. But a lot of our, our principals, particularly at the primary level, were addressing the fact that the ELA, the teachers are routinely assessing students and using that data to help improve instruction, but also to differentiate the instruction, which was, when I first arrived here, that was one of the concerns, that it seemed to be a very singular program, and we're beginning to do much more outreach, we're beginning to do much more support in having alternative programs embedded into some of the main programs, such as reading street, in order to assist students with some of those weaker skills. And as a result, the principal has helped the teachers to work out means of support and tier, obviously the tier, you've heard of tiers of intervention, to talk to the students about the tiers of intervention, help the teachers to differentiate that instruction to meet their needs, and we do believe it's paying off when we look at the testing results, the assessment results. What we don't wanna do is overtest students, though, that's the last thing we need.
And that's tiers, T U E R S.
Yes. A R S, and I'm going to take a break so that we don't hold everybody up. Now that we have an audience.
Representative Garrett Bradley has joined us. Senator Robert Hedman was waiting to play, just let him know.
He didn't jump.
So, uh, I think over the last probably ten years, um, the two of them have been presenting and talking to the committee, so much almost like the mid-year was the end of the year cycle for the, what's going on in the State House? What's going on from education, what's going on at the State House of Education and, and budgeting and other informational items that are sometimes not known to us, known far better than we know. So I will now turn over to you guys, thank you so much.
I'll keep it brief for a number of reasons, number one, I'm tired of listening to him, and he's tired of listening to me, because this is our, we're only halfway through the last two nights. And I know it's redundant for a couple folks that are here, Chairman Schuber, who was present last night, and we spoke to the selectmen, and I see the selectmen yesterday here. The packet that I gave you is the presentation provided to the selectmen last night. I'll go through it quickly. On the second page, we give you an overview as to what the FY twenty-four numbers were received and what the governor's proposal is under House One, and of course, you know that's just the start of the budget process. House will be taking theirs up on April twentieth, and as we progress along up until the point where the Senate upgrades the fiscal year fifteen budget, which will be the week preceding Memorial Day, we'll obviously have a clearer revenue picture, I know that doesn't help the municipalities given where you are in your budget process versus where we are in ours at that point. As you can see on the chapter seventy, there's a modest increase under the governor's proposal, using his, his number as that, as that yardstick. Just a quick comment about chapter seventy, there's been a case in the last number of years where the Senate has come in a little bit higher on the chapter seventy figure, possibly as a result of the fact that we're later in the process, not because we have any greater commitment to education than we have to the House. Regarding the unrestricted local aid, as you know, that's a merge of the two accounts formerly known as lot, the lottery aid account and the additional assistance account, which was a reform that was done a few years ago that made a lot of sense, given the inequities that occurred with the additional assistance account. The picture when it comes to the unrestricted account is not a pretty picture under the governor's proposal. That when you combine the fact that we don't have any early local aid resolution, and it doesn't appear we will have any local aid, early local aid resolution arrived at by two branches, so I don't know how that will play out. We, I'll note that we just had debate on the supplemental budget, and when it was before the Senate, I had taken note that the treasurer testified before the revenue committee that in the current fiscal year that we're in, lottery aid, excuse me, lottery receipts were up twenty million over what was anticipated, and since we were dealing with a supplemental budget, I thought it was appropriate that we try to address what I, what I believe is a local aid shortfall, and I offered the amendment to have that twenty million go back to municipalities in the form of additional local aid through the unrestricted local aid account. It was my feeling that the lottery was set up, we, we know that it was set up to provide, primarily to provide local aid, and that's how it was built to the residents of the state at that time in the seventies, and that has been the function of, primary, primary function of the lottery revenues since then. Fortunately, that was not accepted, the argument was used that we would deal with that in the twenty fifteen budget preparations, but I don't think that was an inappropriate vehicle to put that forward. The third slide that's in front of you kind of paints a picture of what the state aid has been as a percentage of our revenues. You can see the downward trend there, which is unfortunate. The other local aid accounts, I'll give you a five-year snapshot, how that stacks up. And that, of course, has been a mixed bag, the sped circuit breaker account was up slightly, and as you know, as we talked about it last year, the fiscal year fourteen reimbursement rate was, was up to seventy-five percent. We've had, as you know, a low forty-two, I think, in ten. Charter of school reimbursements impacts communities in my districts, varying, my district varying degrees. That's been underfunded by twenty-eight million, and we know that enrollment is up. Regional school transportation down sixteen percent, the public library grants down. Council on Aging Grants, as we talked about last night with the selectmen, has been up twenty-two percent that five-year period. And remember, during that five-year period, state revenues have grown on average about a billion dollars a year. So while revenue has increased for the state, I think our partnership, if you will, with local communities has declined. And then, of course, we saw in twenty-ten the abandonment of, of the Quinn bill and community preservation, which has been a mixed bag too in terms of the reimbursement rate. I would note that an issue that I got involved in the last few years to give towns more flexibility on the CPA, and that really stemmed from some outreach I had from one of my communities. and that really stemmed from some outreach I had from one of my communities, Marshfield, regarding the rehabilitation of existing parks. We will finally get that through. Ironically, the Community Preservation Coalition lobbyists on Deacon Hill were actually opposed to that change initially, even though I had member communities in my district asking for the change. So, it was, that was a little bit of a tough battle. That's been completed, so it gives the communities more flexibility on how those funds are going to be used. The next slide, it talks about the trend line and what we just talked about in terms of the revenues. The good news for Cohasset on the next page has been where some of the increases have come from. We had the school safety grant that was an initiative from the House in the last fiscal year. Seen a slight increase in the public library funding last year, council and aging grant, chapter ninety, which I know was not necessarily a great concern to the school committee, more concerned with the selectmen and certainly folks over at DPW. But just briefly on that, we are at an all-time high in terms of funding chapter ninety. And we took it to another level recently by raising that amount to three hundred million and that remaining hundred million, between two hundred and three hundred, the governor has not, has chosen not to release those funds. I know that the Senate and the House are on record calling on the governor to release that money. They've chosen to prioritize other, within state bond cap, other capital spending projects specifically in the area of transportation, unfortunately. I think those funds would be better spent allowing communities to do some upgrading of their roads. If you drive around, you know that there is a need for that. And then the fire safety grants and the CPA match numbers we provide. I put together a little overview on the federal flood insurance situation. I know we had some good news last night on that. Doesn't impact Cohasset as significantly as some of the other communities I represent, but nonetheless is a concern to many. Next page, just some of the things that from my own perspective, what we've been working on in my office. I threw a little something in there about the school building assistance. It is celebrating, the form of the program is celebrating its tenth anniversary. And I know that, I wish I could remember who exactly it was, but we had officials join us from the town of Cohasset over ten years ago when we marched up to the State Department of Education in Malden complaining about the current, the existing situation we had back ten years plus. And Representative Bradley, myself, and then Representative Hines, I think, were up there. We actually filed a dislation to move it off the state budget, the situation where we had, since the program was created in the nineteen thirties to rely on a year-to-year appropriation within the state budget to fund that program. And as you know, the list had been frozen because of the demand on the program. And we filed that bill to move it off and do it like we do other capital projects, move it to a Malden situation. Governor, then Governor Romney put together a plan, legislature, shall we say, tweaked that a little bit and finally passed that legislation. And I think it's been a success. I think it's been very helpful and I know that Cohasset's benefited to the tune of about thirty-two, thirty-two, almost thirty-two and a half million dollars. And then we highlight some legislation, the home rule legislation that passed both branches and signed by the governor. So, that's a quick overview of what we've got there and turn it over to my colleague in the House.
Thank you, Bob. I won't go through the, my handout, which I think you all have, but it covers similar ground from Senator Headland's end. And I will tell you that the House is taking up the budget on April twenty-eighth. It'll probably be released about ten days prior to that. We are going to go higher on local aid than the governor's numbers. The Senate will probably, they have the benefit of a little bit more time and most of the April revenue will be reported by the time they do their budget. So, they may even be a bit higher than us. But when you see our number and the Senate's number, it's a very good estimate as to where we'll be. Unfortunately, we have not been able to come to local aid resolution, which as you know, is the ability to tell communities now, no matter when we finish the budget, this is what we're spending on local aid. We have not been able to do that as of yet. There's talk of it, but I would not, I wouldn't count it. If I had a guess, it would probably be about a five percent increase over last year's numbers in the House budget anyways. Maybe we end up a little bit higher than that when all is said and done. Revenue is up about a billion off of last year. A couple of things to caution you with though on that, the House, the House in particular is going to dedicate about fifteen percent of that to reduce our funding schedule that we had stretched out for pension liability for the state prim board. When the recession hit, one of the financial sort of gimmicks that we play all the time to meet the balance budget is we stretched that out, so we're trying to peel that back now, which makes good prudent sense, fiscal sense. We're also going to put a good chunk of money into the rainy day fund, which is about a billion two. At the height of the last recession, at its height during the last recession, it was at about three billion. Both of those issues significantly help our bond rating. The bonding agencies love those two things, which as you know, since we pay local aid on a quarterly basis, you know, that helps. And we short-term borrow, having lower interest rates really does save us millions of dollars, the tax base millions of dollars every year. So, that's going to be a couple of initiatives that you don't get reported much, but will actually be very helpful to the fiscal health of the Commonwealth. And so, that is, you know, really the crux of why we're here tonight is sort of trying to give you the best local aid numbers that we can as you prepare your budget. We try to do that with the selectmen as well. And then you can have your interboards dance between yourselves and the selectmen as to how that gets allocated. I also did attach an alert that came out yesterday from the DPA's commission, talking about opiate abuse and some action steps communities can take, given the number of opiate overdoses, heroin overdoses on the South Shore in particular. So, I thought that would be helpful to pass out. Yes?
We had, there was a G D N situation that was, I think it was last year or the week before. And it really stressed what's going on in the South Shore. And I wanted just to highlight a couple of things in Representative Bradley's statement about opiate abuse. Number one, the learn to support, learn to code meetings that are going on right now in Norwell. They used to not have them on the South Shore so much. Now they're in Norwell, which is really helpful for families. And also the importance of having people who are families affected by opiate abuse to have a life-saving type of situation in their home. Narcan has been given out at these meetings and training to use it and that's saving hundreds of lives. Massachusetts definitely has a problem in the South Shore alone. There's been an incredible, it's an epidemic situation in the state of Massachusetts, well throughout the country. And South Shore is definitely, you know, been affected big time. So, I can't stress enough, you know, what's going on and how that attached piece of paper is crucial. And it's affecting, you know, people of all socioeconomic situations, but age-wise are young. So, from high schoolers, twenty-year-olds and thirty-year-olds.
Yeah, I'd also, I'd like to, what I see is dramatic increasing in the last ten years of heroin, OxyContin, prescription drug use. You have prescription drugs in the house, lock them up, run away. If someone finds out that someone had surgery, they'll break into the house and take the drugs that are in there and it's, it's pretty scary. A lot of young people die. So, I thank you because that erases the form that is going on.
Will we try to get the message out? The last thing I'll mention is in my budget priorities will be fully funding the circuit breaker. I know Cohasset had about twenty, nineteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty students still affected by that last year. So, I know it's real money to you all. So, we know you have a packed agenda. Wanted to just give you that information and see if you have any questions before.
Just a quick question though. I know that there's going to be some money going to the pension for rainy day. And my answer, were they also going to backfill this cut from the courts from last year or maybe before?
There'll be some discussion on that. I know that the travel administrator, Harry Spence, is talking about staffing cuts and trying to replace some of that. That's a debate that we'll have and then we'll, the Senate will have and then we'll have in conference as to one of the items that we'll see some increased funding. I think, you know, one of the unknowns, of course, is the, just like you complained to us about how you do a budget July one and you've got to do it before, well, we complain to the feds who do their budget on October one if they do one at all. So, one of the things that we do is try to prepare for that uncertainty, which, you know, from year to year has been a little unclear. So, I think there'll be a lot of savings. There'll be a lot of advocacy groups and they're already coming and it's their job to come in and indicate that, you know, we were here in oh-six and then the recession hit and we're only back to here. But, you know, the revenue's not back to where it was pre-recession. It's starting to climb. Job growth is up, home sales are up, but, you know, we're certainly not. You know, I was talking to somebody today. They said, you know, I've been in now fourteen years and we saw it in oh-three, we saw massively in oh-eight, oh-nine. And I told somebody once, I said, you know, the only time I know we're out of a recession is when we're in another one. So, I think we're really trying to prepare for the unknown right now. So, I think you'll see a good slug of that money put in rainy day.
And is there any debate as far as the ice and snow for local town? From the schools' point of view, if monies go into the, into the town, it's something that can backfill elsewhere. Just relieve the pressure on the.
Yeah, it's one of the things that we're starting to talk, well, of course, we always pay the plow operators late anyway on a state basis and we know you're dealing with it. So, it's one of the things that some folks are starting to talk about now as they're talking about budget amendments and priorities is to try to help communities who, because of this winter. We massively underfund that line every year.
If we fund it at all.
And I think we might have hit the number once, maybe two winters ago when we really didn't have a winter. It was probably the only time that we've actually met it. So, there's some discussion.
I think there's only been one governor since the time I've been in office that has actually submitted in his budget funding for snow and ice. That was part of the rationale when I offered the twenty million because normally we underfunded if we funded it all and when we come back in later, help out communities in a supplemental budget. But we had that vehicle before us and we had that, that was the argument we were utilizing to try to free up some of that lottery money to have come back. Yes?
Can I just ask? I can't help notice your phrasing of five point one million dollars in new revenues while local aid is down forty-two million. Where are we sending the money? We're not getting it.
When I come back next year, I'll bring a copy of the state budget. And Garrett talks about recession, yeah, that's true and that's, that's true. But remember that we've had a series of tax increases and in the current fiscal year we're in, revenues are up five hundred million dollars over what we budgeted for and over projections. And that's, and that's giving us a point now where we're one point one billion over where we were at the same time last year. So, I mean, it's going in a lot of different places, a lot of different places. The two issues Garrett talked about, rainy day fund and helping out the funding schedule. We have the highest bond indebtedness of any state in the nation. We have serious problems with our pension liabilities. What we're doing there is a good thing. I know the Senate concurs with that. There's been statements made already by the Senator in ways and means, so some of that is going there. But we could talk about healthcare costs are up. I mean, there's a lot of cost, fixed costs in the budget every year. Some of the debt service is significant. We're taking on more debt service with what the governor's proposed in his recent transportation plan. So, it's going in a lot of different directions.
Thank you. One question.
Are we allowed to ask a question? Are we allowed to address?
I think so.
Hi, Wayne Child, seventy-three country Cohasset. I am the co-chair of the Cohasset CPAC Special Education Parents Advisory Council. And I'd like to address the Boston Globe article on February first, which talks about the early intervention cuts that the governor is making for EI. And it's been seen by many, many people who noted scientists and therapists and educators that early intervention for children with disabilities is paramount. And I would like just to know your, what your thoughts are about these cuts that are being proposed or have already been. I'm trying to pull up the information right now.
Yeah, I can't speak to the article, but given the timing, it was probably related to his budget proposal. He rolled out, I think it was January twenty-eighth. So, and I, and there were those, there were some folks who were upset as to where his priorities were in that budget. His budget comes to us, we do, we basically can, we pretty much redo it. The Senate redoes ours and then we get into conference. So, I think that, and again, I can't speak to the specific article that I think is called. But I know there were some folks that were upset by that. We understand the benefit of it in the House. I don't know where we're at right now. As I indicated, obviously the special education circuit breaker is a different issue, really addressing the needs of kids later on. Early intervention is important. We know that every dollar we put in is saved. But where the House, where the House is going to come out and out, I won't be able to tell you till after the vote.
I didn't see the article and again, I think the timing probably did relate to his budget proposal. There's not a lot of credence in the governor's budget submission. Pretty much dead on arrival every year. House has decided, we have ours and of course, to get a picture of any particular comp budget, look at what's. And I think you can, and I don't know what that comp history has been like in recent years, but I would suggest that neither the House nor the Senate is probably going to have that particular line. That would be my anticipation.
I just wanted to bring it up because it's something, obviously, as you say, the more intervention we put in to children with disabilities early on, the less it'll cost them.
You could pull it up with the wonderful reception we get there.
I can't believe it.
Let's try. Thank you.
With House Bill three-three-nine, I was wondering, that might relate to us somewhat because our commercial tax base is so low in Cohasset. I think it's under five percent.
Yeah, it, it may, depends on the number of kids.
One pretty much. I mean, we have some, definitely. We have macro program, we have other situations.
That was drafted with, after speaking with officials in Halt and having Jeff Olson from DOE come down and give us an overview of where the foundation is and that there are certain communities that are just below that foundation. It's one way of addressing the school formula without, the school formula is kind of like in the old pickup sticks. You pull one out and everything else moves. So, that was a way to really target some of the communities. So, it may, but I, my, my thought process was more focused to tell when that was, when that was drafted.
Right, but we can't forget Cohasset because we have such a low commercial situation here and that commercial tax, tax rate, you know, base is so low. And that's, we can only do what we can to, you know, when it comes to taxes here. But what is our commercial?
I, it's lower than five percent.
Yeah, four point two percent.
We had some recent buildings up.
Right. Yeah, but I'm almost positive it's under five.
You're right.
So, we need some, you know, clout from you about dealing with that. I know it's a bold situation, the commercial tax base has to be under five and you have to have three-day food allowance. But we have some, more than you think. The food pantry in Cohasset is like we're constantly stocking. It's, you know, I work on the board of the SSL and we're constantly being called to donate more and more. And that's, it's not always as rosy as people think.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one question? Do you guys see the revenue growing for the next few years or is this one billion growth at one time?
I'm not projecting beyond this year. It's, it's very unstable right now. So, I think that, you know, remember that's, that's the number. We project a number and that's higher than what we projected. We didn't project a tremendous amount of growth, but I would not hazard a guess as to where we're going to be from now.
It's a good question because some of that is growth, but also some of that is new revenues via, via new taxes. And some of the gimmickry we used to get us through some of the tough times and it's not available to us anymore. Pension schedule, things like that. But I would, if I could answer that question, I might be another one aware. I'm optimistic.
Because here in Cohasset, we're seeing it level off, you know, it's going to level off for the next few years and that's probably going to hurt us in some way.
Can I add one more thing? And then shoot on the opiates. The only thing I would add to the commissioner's report is a new law that has, that can be very helpful when it comes to opiate abuse. And that's the Good Samaritan Law.
Yes, it's.
So, I would add that. And just for people who are listening, it means that, that people who help somebody who's OD, they are not going to get in trouble. And that has made, saved a lot of lives. Because a lot of times people who are there with a person who's OD, leave them. And then you have somebody who is in a very precarious position. But the Good Samaritan Law was passed in Massachusetts by both the House and Senate by the way. Yes, and now it's a law. And so, that has definitely been a positive. So, just so people know, young people, all people in Cohasset.
Check out the book Painkiller.
Yeah, I've really read a lot of.
Thanks for coming, appreciate very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
So I just wanted to mention, most, most representatives, most senators don't necessarily come to school communities or anything.
No.
Come to sports like me. This is a rare group that comes like this. So I wanted to mention it. Okay.
All right. Let me jump back in. So as we were talking about the teaching and the learning going on in the district, and if you feel the need to stop me anytime, just say so. Just going to go on to the area of math in terms of this is our first year using Envision throughout the elementary levels. It was piloted last year. It seems to be demonstrating, or is, uh, was put by Dr. Deek here. It's more clearly articulated mastery at each grade level. And that is the case we're finding. That we know the committee asked us to meet with parents because they were struggling with the way it's been presented. But the students are definitely catching on very quickly. And what's helpful for the teachers is the way the curi- curriculum is built. And what we found very helpful is that they are able to pre-assess their students, understand where their strengths and their weaknesses are, then move forward and really individualize or differentiate the curriculum as needed per the classroom, the way it's designed. And we find that, that we couldn't do that before with the other program and we find this to be much more helpful.
Which programs?
The Envision Math.
Yeah, right.
The other piece that I really like, and I'm sat in a number of classrooms already to see how it was received as the technology piece that's attached to the Envision program. And that was even before we had the document cameras and all of the projectors being installed. Now that they're being installed, it's a lot more readily available. But the fact is, the students love the technology. And I have to say, the animation that goes on, particularly in that grade K one, two level is very cute. But what we do find is that because there is a vertical climb with math, now we're moving it into the middle school for next year, hence the addition of textbooks that had to be purchased in the budget. We can talk about that later. But at the very least, we see that there's a benefit. And one of the things that we have been observing is we keep going back and looking at the scores year over year as well as horizontally. And that's really important, telling us whether something has a commitment or not, whether it's working for the kids. You know, we often hear that a lot of places might try something, a year or two, it's working, it's not working, it's not working, they give up on it. They try something else. Teachers have to relearn something new. And in this case, we're really making sure that everybody has a deep understanding of the math curriculum and can use it the way it's supposed to be used. And we're beginning to see some growth with the kids, definitely some vertical climbs. So we feel that it also allows the teachers to work with students. So those who are more accelerated can have those opportunities. And students who are struggling or have some weaknesses, they can focus on those foundation skills and help them to catch up and be on task. The other piece we've used for assessment, Galileo, we use for the teachers. It lets them look at the mastery at grade level of the students. Again, that's a really, it's a checkpoint for our teachers. And we find that under assessment, that they've done this year over year. And they can look at strengths and weaknesses of students now vertically. And it helps us to anticipate where students might have struggles moving forward. The other thing that I found very interesting, and I've seen a lot of it at the Deer Hill School in particular this year, is they've put a lot of emphasis on projects, project-based learning. And so we will come in to observe a classroom and the kids will all be working on projects. They each have a part in the project uh, and be able to explain to you what is happening. We had the opportunity go into Deer Hill the other day and the kids were, I, I was just shocked. Us people who were in there, how they were all talking about their individual projects. They had their assignments. They sort of, um, watch each other and make sure they're keeping up on their piece of the project. And then we've seen some of the presentations. So we see that that being a real asset.
And, and can you talk to, uh, Mrs. Demas about an international competition, or it's all across the country, actually. It's, um, I'm forgetting the name of it. It's just my, whatever, remembering.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, I know that my sister-in-law came down from Colorado and she's doing a team for, um, a group of students. And it's an innovation type of thing. It's like a contest that, you know, uh, kids, it's really science math oriented. And they form teams and they are given, um, a category. They pick a category like science and they're given a situation and they have to use their creativity to come to, uh, to solve a problem. This is, uh, um, a definitely a national competition, first of state, then national, and then, uh, international. And a lot of the high performing districts throughout the country, and I believe it's Massachusetts, are involved in this, um, uh, program. So Astor should probably.
I, I will definitely address that with her.
And I'm going to try to get the name of it.
That would be the most helpful, but I will definitely address it with her. And I'll tell you, in relation to that, even though I'm still at the primary level, um, at the secondary level, on that idea, I happened to be in Dr. Tome's classroom one day and she had a mini-science fair. And the students had problems that they were looking at, uh, in that class and talking to us about things such as acid rain and the, the impact it's having on, uh, the atmosphere and upon the ground. And in this case, they were talking about living on, one group was talking about living on the ocean and how the number of corroded batteries that occur in this area in your car. And I was thinking, I've replaced my battery twice since I got here. And I realized because I just replaced it a second time. I said, oh, well, that's why. Cause I kept saying, why does my battery keep dying? Well, they explained to me about the salt content in the air and so forth. Then it made total sense. So it was a real life application that made me very pleased that that was happening. Taking real life problems, talking about solutions and what was going on. And they were using the area around here as part of their projects, which was great. So they got to really know the, um, the land here in the town. So I thought that was great. A couple of other things. I, I talked about the Atlas Rubicon, that the thematic units that are being built by the teachers that can be shared. And we'll certainly, uh, when Mrs. Demas comes, we'll share what those look like, a hard copy so that you can see.
So Atlas Rubicon is the curriculum mapping software? Is that right?
Yes. And we had software prior that had been developed by the state. We had paid for it and then it was, basically was unused. It went unused, it became outdated. We were able to get this, uh, particular, um, software to use. We would have begun this last year, particularly at the secondary level, but between the NIOSC and the CPR and the changes going on, it wasn't fair to the teachers. So this year we've started it. Uh, some of the teachers have gone far beyond what we've even asked of them. But once you get going, it, it's very easy to continue to add in. So I know Mrs. Demas will come, I believe sometime in April and share with you some of the things happening with that. Just go through here, a couple of other things. In terms of the technology, particularly at the primary level, we're able to see the kids, we had the opportunity last week when we were in Deer Hill, we had the opportunity to see the students using the document cameras that were now in the room with the, uh, MIMOs and so forth. And they were doing math projects. And they had to present their math problems, in particular of how they solve things. And they would take the document cameras to their desk, display them and do some real critical problem solving, which we feel adds to exactly what we're talking about in the curriculum of what we're reaching for in the twenty-first century classroom. But also addressing, uh, the teaching and learning that are in my goals. But the other pieces that I haven't had a chance to see it, but I know what's happening, I've heard about it, is now Dr. Deekera has used Skype in the building. And the kids are doing exactly why I want to have the one-to-one initiative start. They're doing exactly what the vision is that we'd hoped for. They're Skyping with other teachers and students around the world in real time. So that they're getting that experience and understanding very much hands-on with the world and doing projects with them. So I feel that that is absolutely fulfilled what our responsibility is and what we've talked about doing with technology. The last thing that we know is happening at the lower levels is the steps to respect curriculum that is occurring as we speak in the classroom every day. We're looking at, obviously, the bullying. There's an awful lot of attention given to bullying from K through twelve. But particularly, we want to start at the younger years. So as the kids move up, they have a foundation to work off of. So that gives you an idea of how, what's going on at the elementary level. I can tell you in a, I won't go into elaborates deeply, but I will say at the secondary level, some of the things that we've had in connection with the teaching and learning is there's an awful lot of cooperative learning groups that we've established in the last two years, particularly this year. We've seen, uh, teachers, more so this year than in the last two years, differentiating the instruction. When we come into the classroom, we will find kids, whether it's elementary or secondary, possibly working in groups, possibly working alone, but working with different materials that's differentiated for their level of learning.
Destination imagination. It does.
That's what you're talking about? I heard, yes.
Yes, it's a fantastic integrative.
I was gonna say, that's not part of my.
Intensities.
Intensities.
Math, science. Well, it has to do with a lot of stuff you want happening in differentiated learning, things like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Destination imagination is fantastic.
Sounds like a Disney program.
No, it's fantastic.
It's very cool. I, we use it in my last study.
Destination imagination uses students. So it's in Massachusetts?
Yes.
Yeah. And our school doesn't do it. So we need to do it.
I will address it with Mrs. Demas this week, absolutely.
And it's parent volunteers. I know it's hard to, uh, burden faculty to do extra stuff. And the good thing about this, you can, it, it's led by a parent, not the parent volunteer. And there's people in the community who also would possibly do it if parents, if we can't find parents.
Okay. That's rude to know. I will show that information. Thank you for checking. We weren't going to let that one go till you found it.
No, cause I promised, um, people in the school district that I would be looking for creative, uh, projects and, uh, ways that our students can do more integrative learning. And that's what your goals.
Mm-hmm. That's exactly what we're addressing. So thank you.
Right now, here tonight, in your goals.
Mm-hmm. Uh, some of the other things that we're able to do this year that we haven't been able to do in the past is we've found teachers are finding new ways to challenge their students in their critical thinking. When you enter the classrooms at the middle school and the high school, you'll find on the boards the essential questions. And you can really measure whether students are understanding the curriculum that's before them based on the question. And listening, I know we've been in Mrs. Grail, we were in Mrs. McGrail Thompson's class yesterday and watching seeds happening before our eyes. Uh, real hands-on and definitely the kids were invested. And again, we've seen an awful lot of one-to-one work with teachers that we haven't seen in the past, that they're able to assist the kids by differentiating the instruction. Basically, at the secondary level, when I spoke with Mrs. Colly in depth before coming in here to speak with you, she definitely, aside from what we've stressed with K to twelve, she uses her, uh, program of studies and really looks at the academic expectations as well as the civic and social expectations to drive the classroom instruction. And, uh, that's very much seen when you go into the classrooms.
Can I make a comment before we run out of time about the social emotional? Uh, we have also a chart here about some of the communities that are, are like-minded communities like Newton, Weston, Wells and Chan. Well, they have something in common with us and we need to probably do more about. And that has to do with the, um, suicide attempts and suicide rates going on.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Newton, you know, is, uh, our student population and, and our socioeconomic situation is very similar to Newton. And so I'm concerned about that. Um, you know, we have guidance counselors, we have the adjustment counselors. It's just not enough. You know, we need to be able to educate, um, our students, especially at the high school level. And, um, tell somebody type of programs, we need to do more. I know Newton has, um, definitely, uh, started, um, programs to, as we speak, to address this issue. And I'm sure you have colleagues over in Newton and some of the other communities, including Newton. Cause my heart's go out to that community and it's very similar to ours. Very high performing, one of the people, uh, who, uh, one of the victims, uh, was taking like five APs and honor prices, all those type of things. So, yeah.
Yes. And, and to let you know that, um, on March twenty fifth, we'll be participating in the Youth Health Connection on educating students and faculty about depression and suicide. We have begun.
And that's fine and good. And I, I'm good friends with, I mean, with the people who work that. And I'm involved in about three boards that, uh, feed into Youth Health Connection. It's great. It doesn't talk about though, a program specifically for our school, in our community.
Mm-hmm.
You know, like a tell somebody program, you can look at what Newton's doing. I mean, it's very good. It's sad it's after the fact, but that's how it goes. And we need to be doing some of those very structured programs. They're, you know, talking about the situation involving, you know, um, giving helpful, um, programs to teachers, every, all the shareholders in the situation, but particularly high school students.
Okay.
So they're not sitting on information. I know students in this high school who I've got to work with their families where the students were told information about, um, suicidal attempts that, and they had to keep it confidential cause their friend said to not to tell anybody. And, you know, I've had to work with families to tell, you know, to educate them. That's the important that the kids need to know. They need to tell their parents or if already in or somebody. So we, we need programs like that. We just don't have.
Mm-hmm. Yep. I don't disagree.
I absolutely agree with Dr. Lee. Uh, that article in the Boston Globe this weekend was astounding to me.
Cohasset Cohasset.
And one of the most astounding points was that the mother said that she had no idea that it was a bad idea for her child to be taking four APs at once.
Five.
Yeah, it was five.
Oh, okay, five. I, I just, I think that families need to understand what that can do to a child. It, I think it's wrong. I think that we push our kids and push them and push them. And they need more information.
Right. And I like some of their interventions. For instance, they had, um, uh, test-free weekends. They had, they instituted a lot of.
Homework-free weekends.
Homework-free, test-free, you know, they, uh, they've had a lot of strategies that I'm sure they've consulted with people like myself, psychologists and people, you know, in, in, uh, who work in education to help come up with these very structured strategies. You know, Youth Health Connection is good. It's helpful. It, it's a program, but it, it's for everybody. We need something that is structured, very structured for Cohasset. I can't emphasize, we don't do enough.
I agree.
So at least I feel that I've said my piece.
Yep.
Hi, Sarah McScreen, fourteen summer. I'm not talking about the budget just yet. Great, great climate report. Really, really helpful. Barbara and Dave, thank you. Excellent, excellent. Um, one thing I just wanted to flag is, um, in your thinking about, um, you know, additional enhancements to the programs around the social media and, um, and communication and just, you know, technology, I don't mean in the classroom, just broader technology that, that students are facing, particularly in the upper grades. Um, I know last year we had Joni Gelman, I believe, come and speak. Um, there's definitely, uh, some folks I've reached out to myself and then to Katie, um, regardless of CEF, or potentially having another speaker come in and maybe do, uh, a portion where it's just parent only and then maybe the, the backend of it is, is, is students as well. Just to, so it resonates with them, uh, the proper behavior and how to, how to get their head around it because they're young and, you know, make good decisions.
Yes, and. And timing with that, Mike Morrissey's office just sent me something on sexting and social media today, but I haven't even had time to read it. But there was something embedded in my emails today to look at. It came out this afternoon.
Just, I hear you talked a little bit more about strategic ear, which I think is fabulous. But we should probably just, that's a really important component as students prepare to go beyond this goal.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yeah. There we go. Okay, definitely. Thank you.
Oh, yep.
Caroline John, seventy three one. And to expound a little more on Dr. Lee's point and and Stino's talking about the stress of the five AP classes, while not every kid's going to take all AP classes and they're still going to be stressed
All right.
trying to stay, you know, stay with, stay, keep up, keep up with those kids who take the five AP classes.
Absolutely.
And that's stressful too.
Mm-hmm.
And then you can't even, we can't, we can even start to talk about the kids who, you know, are uninflanced, that are going to be, have social emotional issues already. So I think it is something.
That are high risk.
Yes, I think that's something that, you know, CPAC has definitely been pushing for.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we're very, very, very much in support of bringing it and going on to the piece of the technology piece, it all ties in together.
Yes, and, and just so the committee knows, we've had, um, the Walker, Walker partnership into the middle school already this year. And, uh, they're working with the sixth grade team, uh, regarding building capacity for the social emotional needs of the students. And that's the starting point for the middle school for the sixth grade, advanced to seventh and eighth. But we're looking at the social emotional needs in the general education classroom and what impacts them. So we have a consultant working right now with the sixth grade team currently. That's, Mrs. Malani's brought that in. And that will continue to move forward. Uh, we've also had a number of trainings going on for therapeutic de-escalation of emotional and behavior crises in the school, should they ever occur. Uh, people are trained in advance instead of waiting for the moment. And, uh, we are working currently with a number of the hospitals as well. Mrs. Malani has been working with some of the units, South Shore Hospital, Mass General, Pembroke, outpatient and others to help students with working in conjunction on crisis treatment. So there's some of things small, we've begun, they're small, but they're starting to move forward. Uh, in a different, in addition, I know that, uh, you know, people like Mrs. Duffy have been. Uh, in a different, in addition, I know that, uh, you know, people like Mrs. Duffy have been participating with the Youth Health Connector, uh, connection meetings. We have actually about nine people who trade off going to the meetings, depending on what day of the week they come. So I am aware that that is happening as well. And we've been working, last but not least, with Jessica Minahan, who is the author of the Behavior Code with Nancy Rappaport, uh, who is over at Cambridge, you've probably heard of Dr. Nancy Rappaport. And we were working on anxiety's impact on behavior in the classroom. So, a number of things have started in terms of working with staff and helping them to develop some capacity.
I, I just think that, uh, now's the time to be collaborative with the other school districts, in particular Newton, because they're examining so much because of what went on there
Yeah.
that we don't really have to wait to, you know, have a lot of sub-communities and meetings and things like that. We could be more aggressive because of the situation and, uh, look at some of their ideas and whether they would work in Cohasset, either pretty much similar or adapted to our certain particular town.
Mm-hmm. Right, and we know they'd have to, because we're a small district by comparison.
Yeah, but, but some of the things that they're doing are small, medium, large size.
Right, mm-hmm.
It doesn't really have a lot to do with the size.
Mm-hmm.
It has to do more with the issue.
Uh, additionally, aside from the social emotional and all of, of the curriculum, just the committee should be aware that in terms of the infrastructure supports, uh, the, the leadership team is meeting regularly and looking at long-range planning, that looks at the infrastructure. I know that Mr. DeGennaro comes regularly to update us on what we can and cannot do. And this year, more than ever, Mr. Kelly and I have been sitting weekly and talking about what's happening in the district, what has to happen in the district and, uh, what has been completed in the district, so. And that's helped because it's allowed us to work with, uh, Mr. Senior thus far, for the short time he's spent here. We worked with Mr. Milanos before, now Mr. Senior, in terms of what the needs are of the buildings. So the building's not sound, clearly. We can't have the kids learning appropriately. So I do want you to know that's in terms of looking at the long-range planning and of course keeping an eye on the growth in the district to make sure we have enough rooms for students if you do continue to grow, because you can't build an addition or schools overnight.
And do we have a long-term plan for our heating issue?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we do, and most of it has been resolved, but there are a number of parts. The, uh, the data system that drives, the computer program that drives the heat is now, uh, that was brought out to us, was what, fourteen years old?
Mm-hmm.
About fourteen years old, and it's being replaced, is my understanding, that
Well, through capital.
Through capital, they're going to do it. And it's quite costly, but they are investing in it this year because of what's going on.
'Cause we've done a Band-Aid approach to it for the last fourteen years.
Yes, yes, and Mr. Kelly came and presented the issue to me about what has to happen in all three schools. And then it was presented to Mr. Joyce, and then it will, went on to, I believe it's already been presented to Capitol
Yes, yes, yeah.
last week. Yes, is the answer.
And then your system has an environmental thing, you know, like a timing thing and all kinds of good stuff.
Yeah, so, yeah, you can, you can adjust, uh, you can do vacation weeks and you can adjust
Yeah, that's important.
by, you know, the time of day and so forth, or you.
Right, and currently we're running the heat a lot longer than we would intend to just to make sure that it doesn't go down during the night, particularly on these cold nights.
Right, yeah.
Unfortunately, the warm days are coming over the weekend, not during the school week. It happens, but on the other hand, on the flip side, we do have some rooms that are so incredibly warm that I had to walk through and I saw windows open today in the freezing cold, 'cause the rooms were, the kids would fall asleep. As, as any school at this point this age with the system and all, but yes, is the answer on the short. Uh, also, I want to, the infrastructure support, district values and learning goals. Uh, teachers are provided with opportunities for participate in professional development and supervision that offer learning opportunities and are job embedded. And I want the district to, you know, the committee to know, and this is only a partial list, I believe up through January, up through January, that's as far as we have catalog, that Osgood's participated in thirty-two PD opportunities, Deer Hills participated in thirty-nine opportunities, and the middle and high school participated in thirty-one opportunities, for a total of a hundred and two opportunities. So, some of those are a single day, half a day, some of those are multi-day. Some of those are courses, some of those are, are conferences, to give you an idea of what we're having the teachers do. We're also looking at when teachers send in to go out for conference, we're making sure it's related to their subject area. You know, if somebody is teaching math and they want to go take, uh, kite flying, we have to make sure it applies to the math principles or we're not going to necessarily have them s- go out and do that. So we want to make sure it's applicable to their area of teaching and certification. So that's the other thing. Uh, and again, uh, we try to obviously to create the safe and healthy work culture. Uh, you know, I do get into the classrooms a lot, teachers do send me emails when there are some concerns, we're able to sit down. My door is always open and teachers definitely take me up on it, and I can tell you by the number of appointments I've had that that is the case. So, uh, those are just a few of the items. I don't disagree with Dr. Lee that we have to focus more now on the social media, the unfortunate drug issues and the, uh, emotional stress that kids are under. And that will be, uh, obviously forthcoming these next few months. I don't know if you have any questions.
Yeah, I, I think the, uh, emotional thing, often as depression may be covered up with drug and alcohol abuse, so you may see a lot of drug use that is, uh, a way to escape from depression, so.
Yes. Yes.
Um, the availability of the drugs in the South Shore is, um, is really a, it's a score, since then. And I think in the Midwest it's more methamphetamine, but here it's, uh, prescription drugs and heroin is, uh, very, very, very common.
Please, and, and, you know, again, there's, obviously, we are concerned about alcohol abuse as well. So, those are the areas of our topics that we're worried about.
Um, I'd like to request a copy of the, the latest version of the elementary school, uh, assessment document. The report card.
Sure.
Okay, just to see what changes have come down the pike since the last time I saw one.
Okay. That's fine.
It's a strong word, hate, but I.
What did you want, sorry? Could you just see the copy?
A copy of, a copy of the report card.
We're just to see elementary, elementary level.
Oh, right, yes, yes. That they're using now?
Well, I, I personally have seen.
Okay.
Do you know?
And then I'll take your feedback, Mrs. Stevens.
Thanks.
If, I mean, it might be helpful to, um, I'm, would assume you, you reassembled the committee that worked with Mrs. Stevens, maybe, or whether they did via email or whatever, but to just kind of get a, whether it was a survey mucky or a poll from the parents, since they've had two cycles of the report cards come out. Um, what do you like, what do you not like, what would you like more specificity on? 'Cause I think it clearly seems like it's a step in the right direction, but maybe not quite there yet. I'll write it down, I'll be there with you tomorrow. Excellent, yes.
Ask for a, uh, motion to approve warrant fourteen dash sixteen Sierra.
We'll make a motion to approve warrant fourteen dash sixteen S.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discretion?
Nope.
Um, favor, or support, um, roll call motion, please.
Hi, Gina Stino.
Hi, Helene Lee.
Hi, Paul Schuere.
Hi, Paul Nivani.
Hi, Mary McGoldrick.
Pass is five nothing. Uh, next up, fiscal year fifteen budget.
Yes, so. We're on forty-seven, is it? Okay. Uh, so last week we had a budget meeting and there was certainly a lot of discussion about what the district really requires to operate appropriately and make sure kids have everything they need. Uh, there was also a discussion as to the budget that was presented to us but not voted on in the fall. Should we be utilizing that, that particular number or what is it that we actually need in our numbers? We tried to stress to the budget committee at the time that one of our concerns, excuse me, one of our concerns with year-over-year, uh, growth in the district is not parallel with year-over-year budget growth. So our population is rising, but our, our budget is more flat-lined, and so we obviously are having a, a gap. And so this year we were really trying to correct a number of things, obviously we're trying to close the gap. At the same time, we wanted to correct the situation with the kindergarten salaries and make sure they're not being pulled for the revolving accounts. And so we worked very hard. We know we have a number of, of staff that need to be added on. It is absolutely dire that we add an adjustment counselor, it's not even, it's not even open for discussion at the secondary level, when I have seven hundred students utilizing a single individual. And if we want to talk about stress and needs, that would be highly unfair to the individual as well as to the students, most certainly to the students. Uh, we need to add the foreign language teachers that are listed in the budget because for one thing, we have a growing population at the middle school, so there'd be a number of kids who can't take foreign language. And at the high school, if we don't add our halftime person, because of the way the block scheduling, the students would have to miss a whole year of foreign language, which is not really helpful if you're trying to learn a language. So that's a number of faculty that are difficult to take out there. At the same time, we're concerned about rising numbers at the elementary level. We know there's been a lot of discussion about, excuse me, about the kindergarten class and taking away someone or adding someone in, and again, at the third grade level, where those students have had and then not had, and, uh, we're putting back in. And clearly the emphasis is to support the lowest grades first, because that is where the most work has to be done. In doing so, we also know that we have to deal with many, many unfunded mandates. Includes technology, includes addition of textbooks, includes licenses for software, so that we can deal with the curriculum mapping. Uh, we can deal with the, uh, the teacher's evaluation tool, uh, the technology we need to support the park, which will be online this spring. Originally we were told paper form, now they've switched us to online and the requirements that go with that. Uh, the numbers of unfunded mandates continue to grow. I think we said yesterday, we talked about transportation, number of unfunded mandates with the transportation world, as well as, uh, some of the things we have to do with special education and so forth. That being the case, when we built our budget, we certainly built it so it exceeded eight hundred thousand dollars. So, we did meet with Mr. Senior this afternoon, uh, moving on, Thursday, the, they encouraged us to lower our budget by close to a quarter of a million, I think it was around.
Well, it was down to about five hundred seventy-two.
From eight hundred four.
Five seventy, five hundred seventy-two, uh, one two.
The A and O four.
That we were trying to work with, or the eight hundred presently. And today we did meet with Mr. Senior, who has gone back to look at where he can help us support the students here. And right now, uh, from the number that we presented to the committee on, we're about eighty thousand dollars less is where he has come and said, I, I think I've reached my level of where I can find monies to support the schools this particular year. And so I'm coming to report to the committee that, you know, that is what he has discussed with us today in terms of, is there a way we can refine the budget in any way to lessen it by approximately eighty thousand dollars, reducing the stress on the town? Uh, because it happened so late this afternoon, the answer was, we'll have to look, we cannot give you an answer, in fairness.
Oh, question, is eighty thousand dollars less than the eight hundred thousand or so you're talking, huh?
Yeah.
Right.
Yes, yes. So, uh, you know, returning to the committee to notify you of our discussions with the town manager and to say that we are willing to sit down and try to figure out if there's a way to do that. I don't have an answer for any in the moment, because we met so late in the day today that we couldn't sit down again, we were upstairs at the yard and so have a meeting, so we could not get together. Uh, we will absolutely, you know, follow the direction of the committee, it is your budget, but we felt we had to come forward and say that we're willing to take a look, but we're not sure what that will look like. And we realize that there is a vote expected next week, but that means we cannot put any final budget in front of you tonight. And our, at all costs, what we obviously don't want to do is remove any teachers. Um, you know, I think we made a, a, asserted fairly heavily that the number of teachers in the classroom are pertinent to the level of, of curriculum and commitment of students. And we feel it's pertinent that they remain there. So that's the first place that we're absolutely sure we're not going to look at is the teachers. But we have to look at what else, is there anything we can sacrifice? We know that we don't build a budget with a lot of frills, or any frills, to be honest. And so we have to figure out, is there anything we can do to reduce the overhead of the budget? And sitting here before you tonight, I cannot say we have an answer for you with just a few hours' notice.
I have one question, but the, the one item which is out there, I guess is the natural gas contract, which is gonna be coming up.
Right.
Um, my big concern is that the natural gas prices have been up in the last probably twelve months and to renegotiate that, looking at it, my concern is that that price would probably go up significantly for the next contract. And that may be one
Well, the, uh,
one of the items that may very well go up.
Right.
Very well be, maybe it's been worse than last year.
The, the town, the town just recently, um, contracted with, with one of the members, I figured it was through November of next year. But we also were planning to, um, go out and bid with the South Shore Education Collaborative, but that doesn't happen until the spring, you know, after the, after the winter months are over, so get a better price.
So will we get through this budget cycle?
So then maybe we can extend that November date through, through next year.
Do you think we'd be able to get?
Get a lower, go, get a lower number.
Yeah, could we get through this budget cycle with the same contract? That the, the cost for the natural gas.
Well, we are in a contract now.
So would that, would that go through this fiscal year?
But, but it's a high, it's a high contract, till the end, till the end of next November, I believe.
Okay, so we have, this next budget cycle is, is gonna be okay?
Part of it is gonna be okay, right.
Part. So up until November.
Right, right, right.
So we have, basically the winter months next year would be.
Right, so the plan is to, to try to, to, uh, piggyback with the South Shore Education Collaborative in the spring to extend that, uh.
But that would affect the budget that we're looking at right now.
Right, right. We don't know which way, though, uh, we're down, you know, it's hard to know, but usually in the spring, the prices are lower, so you can lock in at a better rate.
I, I guess my concern is that we had a, a great locked-in rate for, I think, two and a half years in the last, uh, three.
Well, we didn't lock in the last couple of years because the rates were so low.
Or should say, they, they kept going.
You know, so, so we didn't lock into, you know, just recently this year, they've been going back up again.
But we had certain prices.
So then the, uh, the town decided that it would be a good time to lock in, short term.
So that's, I mean, that's on the horizon, it would be potentially a cost.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just a comment on, um, staffing and at different levels. And I, I don't know that the community realizes that if we have one or two or three very senior teachers retired, then that can impact our bottom line also in a positive respect for, for budget purposes. And that, it seems to me that no one has brought that up yet. I know of at least one teacher who's retiring.
Well, until we have documentation, we can't go that way.
I know of at least one teacher who's retiring, and I've heard of two or three others who are potentially retiring. So that could help us. It's unfortunate that it doesn't have to happen until after our budget's set. And April first is the date, right? For them to inform you that they're retiring?
For what? No. They can re, they can inform us the day school opens, before school opens.
In order to put in their retirement papers, however, I think that they have to register with MTRS by April first.
Three months before they
They want to exit.
Okay.
Three, three months before they want to receive their first
Okay.
pledge.
Oh, okay, but
All right. We have people, well, I, I know.
Well, that's three months before.
Yes, but we've had people retire in August and wait their time, so that's why we can't predict necessarily.
Yeah.
Technically.
I mean, we do, as, as soon as we know somebody is retiring for, for certain, we, we always make that adjustment. We've got, we've done that with the House, it, uh,
Okay, but my suggestion is that
I haven't seen anything this year this time.
Two people, if two people retire, then we've more than covered our eighty thousand dollar shift, so.
Sure, yeah.
And I respect that, but I also know that last year we had somebody suggest they were retiring and they didn't. So in fairness to them, it, it's not fair to make a prediction that could happen, so until we're sure, you're right, if it happens after April first, there is nothing we can do about it. Actually, after the vote, you know, we, you've done your vote, that's the unfortunate part.
Oh. And I, I assure that, um, our business manager has looked at supplies and organizing for all those things.
Yes.
And I think it's always good to take another look, you know, with, with having
Yeah, well, this is not mentioned, you know, just this afternoon, so we haven't had an opportunity to go back.
Right, exactly, 'cause you and I have been working on, you know, the, making this, uh, high school and all the other buildings as green as possible.
Right, right.
So, um, I think that's always important.
And if we knew the solar panels was a definite, we could, you know, make that adjustment.
Yes, but we don't know that, and we know that we're gonna save once that is up, right, that, we can't count on that yet. But looking, you know, there's been a lot written on schools and green initiatives, and I'm sure you probably have seen some of the articles.
Yeah, and, and Mrs. Estino and I have been working with the all-round of energy committee on that, because they've got a lot going on.
Correct, correct. And being able to buy collaboratively and things like that, our dining, we've done that, um, in the past.
Yeah, we continue to do that, where we tend, set bids and.
Right.
A couple of years ago, a parent also had a great idea that if we needed to cut from the budget, we could certainly cut school supplies and do a school supply drive. Um, I believe that this past year, there was a buying initiative, was it in the middle school? Did, was it the The, was it the P S O fund?
Yeah, it was.
Um.
Yeah, wish list online, a lot of students.
P S O started, uh.
Yes, yes.
Right, a wish list online.
They can buy all their school supplies, all the teachers bought, came together and color-coded and the whole thing, and spotted a line, and they shipped a box to your house.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
It was like, kind of, yeah.
You know, that, you know, that's been usually the first thing we look at, is, you know, cutting the supplies.
Absolutely, and a lot, yes.
We talk about that every year at the end of the year.
Yeah, yeah.
And when we went to, uh, Mass Association of School Superintendent's and school boards, you know, um, they had, um, a presentation on budgets and. And ways to, you know, uh, try, good, uh, kind of out of the box ideas. And people were using the, um, uh, school website, you know, the online stuff, to have a wish list. Um, having a wish list of stuff that you would normally buy. And since we're in a town where people work in industry.
People donate, you know, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, whether it be computers, whether it be supplies, paper, whatever. And they can get a tax write-off because we're a nonprofit, and that can, so, I think the wish list idea was really interesting.
Yeah.
It seemed so simple, but I was impressed with how many thousands of dollars the one school district can save by doing a wish list.
All worked out.
It was pretty cool.
But, but that would also mean that the parents would be, in addition to the fees and anything else going on, they'd be filling in the backstop for the supplies.
Uh, I recognize it, but, uh, the bottom line is our, uh, thanks to our good relationship with the town manager, being, having a differential of eighty thousand is a lot better than ten times that. So, I'm, you know, feeling positive in a challenging situation. And I think that we don't know what the future will bring in terms of enrollment. Right now, we're in the upswing in enrollment in the, um, we talked about the tax contribution being kind of flat. But we don't know what the future will bring, so in the short term, the wish list can be good and it can be instituted. I think that, yes, it is soft money, but we need to look at all avenues. And it was just ideas generated by all other school board people. They did a whole presentation, I think you were at it, part of it, maybe, this, yeah. And that was one idea, they had so many other ideas, but that was one that stuck out.
I actually was also delighted at the last budget planning group, um, meeting where Mister Senior presented an idea for having almost like a reserve fund for unanticipated emergency funds that are needed. I thought that that was great, thinking outside the box. I mean, we've never had that kind of an opportunity presented at any kind of a budget discussion.
But there is a reserve fund in the town.
I understand that, I understand that.
There you go. I think the concern I had with that was that you would have to go to town meeting to draw money on that. So, there's no sense in going to town meeting if you're gonna have a town meeting anyway for the budget, why don't you just enter the budget?
Right, but the concern's always that, well, you will end up with money at the end of the year. And say we did have three people retire and we had a fully funded budget, then we end up with another hundred fifty thousand dollars at the end of the year, and we're getting slammed for not budgeting properly. So, you have to think outside the box a little bit, and we have to work collaboratively. And I think that he is a collaborator. I think that it's, I think it's a great change for the town and a good opportunity for the town to think differently about their finances and what everybody needs.
Yeah, he's a, we spoke with him about that today, he's removed that as an option.
Oh, he has?
He has, yes.
Okay, well, he's also come up.
I mean, he's actually added to the bottom line, that's, he's given us the increase.
Yeah, okay, right. Okay.
That was part of the, part of the reason.
Just, just one quick point, um, I think the, the, you know, hopefully we can find a way to, to make this work the lower number, uh, than we were talking about at the last meeting. But as we said, uh, it was encouraging to hear, uh, at least, uh, at least Mister Senior saying that we, uh, he appreciated that we really need to keep like, yeah, class size as small as possible. I think that's probably the, the one metric that means the most to at least many of us, uh, and, and parents. Uh, but secondly, related to that is, you know, if, he seemed to appreciate that if enrollment somehow jumped up, uh, which is possible, as we've seen, that we could, we could revisit, and we would need to revisit, in the same way that local receipts may jump up, our costs may jump up. So, so we can work together over time, you know, we're only basing things on forecasts, assumptions.
Works both ways.
Right.
Assumptions are always wrong in one direction. So, um, we'll just have to see what happens, I guess, uh, and have kind of a, I think, a very healthy, trust me, on both sides, uh, equation.
Hmm, I mean, we, we may have to have another meeting where the final numbers come out. And we have to discuss what, which was presented as a lower number than we'll just present initially. So, it's, uh, timing-wise, it's tight from the, timing-wise.
Right.
Yeah, but if, um, yeah, if we're gonna be ready for next Wednesday to vote on the budget. Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Right, uh, well, if Mr. Senioro could do what he's done in the past and look at the budget and come up with some ideas, sometime, you don't know, you know, this is my fifth year,
As you say.
Yeah.
and you've managed to give us some ideas, and then we talk about the different ideas to get that, you know, situation.
Maybe forty five, forty days.
Right, and then decide as of when.
Correct, and then we can talk about them, see if any of them are held.
Which, which, which area you wanna go to, yeah. Right.
Did you, did you watch the board's, oh, you were at the board's, sorry, I saw you sitting there, sorry.
I was at the board's, yeah.
The selectmen all noted that they don't even have a budget yet.
No one, no, we have no budget.
Okay.
Can't do anything.
So, they can't do anything. Why can't, I think that we should probably err on the side of whatever and push our vote to the following week, to the nineteenth, and move it back to where it was initially.
My understanding, we need forty-five days prior to town meeting.
There's, oh, I spoke to town hall today, there's always a placeholder in the budget, in the, the town meeting for our budget. It's the, the motions and the warrant articles that you have to have the, that have, um, specific concerns about the, the timing.
So, the, the budget itself, my understanding, we needed the minimum, if the sports selectmen vote on it and put it forth, they need seven days to mail, and they need, I believe, it's twelve days beforehand for the final.
The printing, the, I don't know.
Yeah.
When did you say our next meeting is? We're having a meeting next week.
Wednesday.
The supposed to be on the next week.
I, I question to get an answer to my house.
Where we were gonna vote the budget.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm concerned with the, with the exact timing of when the budget needs to be voted upon.
I can't be on the nineteenth. Can you just suggest the nineteenth?
Cause forty-five days would mean it has to be the twelfth.
That's right.
Yeah.
But twenty days would mean, obviously, three weeks later.
It's not forty-five days. After the conversation I had today, I don't believe that, that we're, that we have to live by that for this purpose. And obviously, the town side isn't, because there's a placeholder for their budget also. So, maybe you didn't check into that?
I, um, I will, I mean, what I've checked into was the forty-five day limitation, that, um, I have, I have not, I know.
I tried to look for my laws, I couldn't find it.
I have not been able to find any except the forty-five days, yes.
Uh, we don't have a next meeting until the, uh, uh, eighteen.
Eighteen, so that's the night before ours.
I think you can reserve.
Twenty minutes. Oh, well, ours, I bet, no, I think if we had a nineteen.
I think, I think we can.
I, I think you really can reserve a space, but I, uh, we haven't had this situation in my memory, but it's been possible.
I did ask for a timeline, I haven't presented.
So, I think we can. And the town clerk is very accurate, so you, I think you ought to check to make a call.
Is it twenty-six too late?
Could be too late.
Too late.
Well, I'll speak with the town clerk, and that'd be my understanding, that the timing is such a forty-five days.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a small public, you know, it's a little.
Well, no, I, I agree with you a little bit, I think, if she said you can reserve the space.
But I, I guess reserving the space would be one thing, I wanna make sure it's legal, so we have the possibility of placing it along, on the town meeting warrant, if it's not.
Oh, yeah, no, you can do that, I will do that. We're gonna have the same problem.
Yeah.
So, I have a couple, oh, sorry, Sarah, I'm still at the fourteen, so I have a couple of comments, and I spoke to you individually, but I'm a huge advocate in consistent communication and transparency, so I just wanna kind of give everyone updates of the work that we've been doing on behalf of, um, supporting Barbara and Dave and, and the rest of the school committee. Uh, so last night, we spent some time, uh, at the selectmen's meeting in, in Maricopa, and if there's anything that I, that I missed on this. Um, and, and gave actually handout with some bullet points around, um, again, supporting the enrollment numbers. Um, and, and agree that there is no budget in place, uh, which is the absolute best time to be talking about this, because once the budget's fixed, having this conversation is an hour of my life I won't get back. So, um, it is, this is the absolute best time to be talking about it, I think.
One hour?
I think, yeah, exactly. Um, uh, and, and we're committed to spending time on this, uh, but I think Steve acknowledged that, Steve Almo, which was, we have to be talking about it now, because once the budget's fixed, it's, 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 it's over. Um, a couple of things, one is, uh, back to your point around, um, Chris Senior, so, so I agree, he was, the, the, the delta was two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty-two thousand. You came in at eight oh four and, and five seventy-two. Um, we spent some time with him this morning, about two and a half hours, again, walking through these same points, because I think, um, he's sixty-something days on the job. So, we're trying to, you know, really accelerate his ramp up and, and again, just give him, um, another perspective on the issues that you're struggling with and the, and the complexity of the issues. I think he, um, I think he did a really good job in his first pass of the budget, although I, I wildly disagreed with some of the new concepts that he was introducing last Thursday. Um, but hearing the feedback and, and sharing that with him, I think he's done an excellent job of reviewing the numbers and adjusting some of his figures to get you much closer to the eight oh four number that definitely need to be at. The, the staffing changes that you're, that you're putting in have to stay in place, that, that is, is so critical, we've come this far, to move on that is, is really, really dangerous for, for the upcoming school year. I think what would be helpful is, is for, for you and Dave, you're excellent at it, to really go line by line and deep dive.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
I think the retirement, if, if someone blasts you, if someone retires, and, and they say you have a surplus in the budget, then we can defend that ten out of ten times. That is, that is, that's noise, and, and we need to push that aside.
Yeah.
I, I think you gotta spend time on that, cause he's, 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 he was very collaborative, very supportive, he wants to bring this over the goal line, I think we're close, I, I said, I think I'm at the ten yard line.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think we got, you gotta really spend time, if you need help with that, right, we'll help you there, you get grants from people like the C E F and the P S O, right?
Close, right.
Those supplement where there's, your areas where you're like not quite there. You, you're gonna have to, to mitigate your risk and kind of figure out what the balance is, right? So, you may say, we're really, really tight here, but we've got the headcount we need, we have to, we have to get closer. So, I know it was a late discussion, we told him to call you the minute we left to meet, so call Barbara, go tell her where you're at, cause this is positive, this is not a bad conversation.
Right.
It's also a good thing.
It's a great conversation, right, way different than five seventy-two.
Right.
But, but work collaboratively to, to figure out where to fill that gap. The other thing you talked about, um, when it was early in this discussion, was having a, um, a reserve fund, and I agree with you, Paul, I, I, the last thing you want is fifteen competing interests for a reserve fund. That, that'll be a, that'll be all on the floor. But you talked about having a reserve fund that, that would be, you know, um, allocated for the schools, so that would be a reserve fund that you could use in a, in a, you know, uh, worst case scenario. What we said is that doesn't work for headcount, because you, you can't get, having a reserve fund in January, talking about headcount, is, you've already lost.
Right.
So, and you got that concept out.
Yeah.
So, I think a lot of progress has been made, uh, I think if you can, if you can, again, it's, it's painstaking, but a deep, deep, deep dive into the numbers and see if there's any area where you can be a little more aggressive in your numbers, but, but, but get closer.
We've done it before.
You're, you're great at it, so we have huge, we told him the huge confidence in Dave and Barbara that they'll be able to, to work those numbers and, and close the gap.
Have kids that look at it, yeah. Yeah.
But, but that's a, that's a positive, um, you know, positive stuff, I think. And looking forward to it.
Very close, I think, I think.
Yeah, very close.
Now, I don't know if you did, but, uh, if you call the D O R and throw up the concept of, you, of having a reserve fund, see what they say. There may be a way to do it that is different, with different terms, uh, that you can take advantage of.
But you should throw up the table, that's how we've, uh, so.
Seven of the tables, it's a move point.
Yeah, yeah, they have a, uh, for, uh, boys, uh, for, uh, they have the special, for all the boys, they're very helpful.
Yeah, well, uh, yeah, I mean, I mean, the. I mean, the, the Department of, certainly, they've set up both the capital stabilization and the reserve fund, which, which are inherently the same type of fund.
Yeah, I know that, yeah, I know that, but. But this is a whole.
It's only using a different term, it's.
Well, I was just wondering on the vote process, because there's trouble isn't it, for the, the processes from the town meeting has, is our legislative body, they have, already.
Yes.
And the ones that are fired, there's not actually a town.
I, I remember, we used to have, um, in the, in other times, a special town meeting in September, so it was easy.
Alright.
If the schools needed some more money, we could vote the money right then and there, because they would be hiring people. And it was very clear, and, uh, particularly on, if you had someone coming in for special ed, she needs about fifty thousand, what do you have?
Yeah, maybe this special town meeting was much later in the year than we should.
The last two, I believe.
Yeah, she was coming in, she would be back just September, because it was easier, and you gotta think, you know.
I mean, certainly, maybe the selectmen would put forward a special town meeting perhaps in August or September.
And, you know, I thought, uh, August and all wanted it, then it was later and it was, you know, so I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Either.
So, I think that's something we should look at.
Um, Adrian McCarthy, eighty-five, um, I've been scrubbing your budget for a little bit, cause I enjoy that, so, um, I wanna show a little action. Um, the biggest part I find, I know, we're in good company, I'll say.
Trying the club.
Um, I have some questions on the special ed, um, budget. And one of my biggest, uh, questions is the removal of the use of facility tuition. Um, the classroom from where I've identified is in the high school, and I don't know that.
That's the collaborative.
Right, the social education.
That's going away, actually.
I know, why is it going away, that's my question.
Space, we need the space.
Let's go.
I know, could you tell me what that space is going to be used for?
Will be used for other classroom space.
Well, the high school doesn't seem to have a classroom problem, that's what my, that's what my question is. The, all along, all the meetings I've watched, your problem is middle school, and if you look at your spaces, um, if that space is able to stay, A, that's sixty thousand dollars in revenue, B, you have.
That's, it's not sixty thousand dollars, that sixty thousand was from previous years, it wasn't used. It's, it's four thousand dollars a classroom per year.
You're just getting four thousand?
Yes, yeah, that's what we actually get, yeah.
Yes.
So, last year, you had how many classes, did you have?
No, that sixty thousand was from previous years, it was never used.
Was in a revolve account?
Well, it was at the collaborative, it was, it was held at the collaborative.
Okay.
They paid it off, I think it was.
So, we used it this year.
Okay, so it's only what's, it's valuable for a thousand?
Four thousand.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so.
It's a good idea.
But regardless.
Normally, they have, they us, they usually had two classrooms at the high school, but this year, because of the space constraints, we pushed it into one classroom.
Right. Okay.
And split it in half, a lot of them.
But if they were willing to stay and you didn't need the space, and that's a little bit of revenue, B, the, there is a coacid, at least one, maybe more, students.
Yeah. Right.
So, that child that is going to need transportation to the next classroom, whatever town it ends up in.
Right.
So, you're now going to be increasing in your special ed. And I did notice your out-of-district costs have skyrocketed, um, in, over the years, some, you know, five hundred thousand dollars. And so, there seems to be a shift of how business is being done.
Yeah. I mean, no doubt, it's been great having the colla, having collaborative here, um, for, for, for all the kids.
Right. Well, yeah, I mean, the kids, too, there's, there's this best buddies program, which has been fabulous with, um, so there's a lot of pros and cons in not just revenue.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
But at the end of the day, you know, if you can keep some small revenue stream and you don't need that space, it seems to be that it could be a slight win-win, um, and then the transportation, I.
Well, yeah, but until now, she said they still need it.
Yeah.
But the, the other thing I just wanna comment, you said the out-of-district, I want you to know the number of students that are out of district have dropped
Mm-hmm.
with the price going up, because more students are in residential, and some of those placements are as costly as three hundred thousand dollars for a child. And they eat it, we don't, you know, randomly choose it, obviously, so, uh, the fact is, we have fewer students there and the costs are higher.
Right.
So, then our numbers were able to actually support the kids better in district right now than ever before.
So, in your out-of-district, in collaborative, there's fewer students, but just higher costs?
Yes, our numbers have dropped.
The numbers have been pretty stable, the number of students, but it's the cost, it's the cost that's gone up, yeah.
Right, that's dropped a little.
The costs have gone up that much, and that's from the state, that much, you know.
And they go every year.
The state decides when they can go up.
It's the size.
So, that needs to be.
And, and the other thing, just to that point, Adrian, I think this really should be known, is that when the state approves an increase in those tuitions, it's not always convenient when they do it, they can do it in December and make it effective January first, and you haven't got it in your budget, but you still have to come up with the money.
Right, yeah.
Right. Right.
So, we're at the mercy of when the state approves any of those increases as well.
Okay, so then, um.
Thank you for studying that.
That'll be something we look at again, you know, when we try to find that eighty thousand, so we'll get those state numbers, the state rates.
Right. My other question was, your administrative salary for the bookkeepers, assistant?
Yes.
I heard that some of it's paid in this budget, but then is some out of the athletic budget?
Yes.
Or the revolving?
Out of athletic revolving.
Out of athletic revolving.
Yes, and facilities revolving. So, that, that salary's coming out of three different places.
Hmm.
Okay.
Can I just add, that was addressed in the minutes that we approved tonight also.
For me.
Okay.
I don't, were you here when we voted the minutes?
Yeah, I didn't, I mean.
Yeah, the, um, a couple of years ago, they, we had a state audit, and they said that we needed more help in the business office.
Right.
But we also needed help in the athletic area because of the receipts and the bookkeeping.
Yeah, the, um, a couple of years ago, they, we had a state audit, and they said that we needed more help in the business office, but we also needed help in the athletic area, because of the receipts and the bookkeeping, it's kind of a nightmare.
Uh.
Right.
So, um.
We wanted to tighten all that.
The business office tightened it all up and combined it so that it's contained in the business office, so it's watched.
Right. Right, oh no, I just was wondering where the rest of the salary was gonna, could, I'm, I'm pretty sure it wasn't just a twenty thousand dollar salary, so I just was wondering where else it's been paid out.
Yeah. So that's where the split came.
That's sixteen thousand paid out of, yeah, it's a lot of money.
Sixteen, yeah. Um, okay, so then one other, uh, thing, can you, do you know about the round number of where you're at basically for last year's, um, end of the year, um, surplus, which purchased, repurchased of the supplies in the special ed, um, do you remember about how much that was?
I think it was about, including special ed, I think it was about, um, six forty-four.
I can't remember. Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say this.
I was gonna say it's.
Yeah, I was gonna say six hundred dollars, it was in the six hundred.
Yeah.
So, so when you tightened the budget last year, do you seriously think that you squeezed that much, that you're not gonna have some sort of surplus to prepay supplies again, and, and the special ed, for what have you been doing?
Well, I think, um, I think for the end of this year, because our s, our, um, special ed out of district has been stable, I think we will be able to repurchase, prepay tuition.
Yeah. And the supplies again?
The supplies, we're not sure about yet, but we will be able to squeeze something out, but the, the tuition will be able to.
Okay, that's very, that's help.
Yeah, that's a big help, yeah.
Right. We just, you know, with such short notice, we didn't wanna.
Right, I'm just asking.
Or, or I should say, well, we'll do this or that, and then tomorrow after we've said something, we have to pull it back.
So, right.
Did you just want to?
I think we may have to do it Monday, I think we have to post it, we have to post another meeting by tomorrow evening.
Monday, what day?
What, as a subcommittee meeting, as what, what type of meeting?
If we had to readdress the budget.
As a sub, subcommittee or a full committee or?
So we're gonna have another school board meeting on and voted on Wednesday?
Well, yeah, if the timing is such, yeah, I, again, I'm not certain of the timing, I'm not certain of the timing is going to allow us to do it on the twelfth.
You do want to.
That's the first thing I need to figure out, of course, who would give us the official rule?
I mean, I'd, I'd try to turn questions, look at the town manager, he wouldn't be sure.
Well, why don't we go err on the side of caution and just meet on Monday for, but it's not gonna be a long meeting.
Right, that's what I'm. That's exactly what I'm planning on doing, I'm planning ahead, looking at the timing.
Yeah, so why don't we do that? I gotta get going on tonight.
See, if, if it works out, I, I'm looking at the calendar here, I'm not looking at people here, but what if.
Yeah, Monday's fine. Everyone do it.
Bob, I don't know if I'll be ready on Monday.
Oh, okay, well, then if Dave is having really tight, yeah.
Yeah.
Not only two weeks. All the weekend, so.
Well, how about Thursday, we have then Wednesday and Thursday?
If the, if the time is such, then you gotta vote out on the twelfth.
I guess I'll leave it at this, but, yeah.
So I, I'm not sure whether it's gonna be able to be entered beyond the.
But if Dave can't get it ready, you know, you can't get it ready.
But I think they should put the vote out until the nineteenth, the twelfth is hard even.
Who would give the rule, the attorney general, who does this official?
Or we could put the vote on, we could do the vote on the thirteenth, meet on the.
Let's see, so forty-five days is the twelfth.
It's actually a little later than that, because if you go to, uh, if you go for Monday, the April twenty-eighth, and you just go backwards, um.
It's the fourteenth, you're telling me.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Counted the fourteenth last month, March fourteenth.
Yeah, that's wrong, it's the fourteenth.
Let's see, uh, all right, so if you go, uh, twenty eighth to the twenty first is, say, seven days, fourteen, twenty one, twenty eight days puts you to the thirty first, thirty five days to the twenty fourth, uh, forty two days to the seventeenth, forty three, four, five is the fourteenth.
It's fourteen.
Plus or minus one, I've gotta, I don't, I don't figure that out.
But there's a weekend, so you, the, the best would be even the fourteenth.
Fourteenth, that's okay.
But Dave needs enough time to, to advertise, he needs seven days.
I need seven days to advertise for a public hearing, it's gonna be at least seven days before.
Has to, has to advertise for seven days to, yeah.
Yeah, we could meet Wednesday and then vote Thursday.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
And advertise just to be safe tomorrow.
Cause you have to advertise, but.
I would have to, yeah, I would have to.
Just to be safe, you can always cancel it.
Yeah, why don't we do that, that's the safest way.
Wait, wait, capital's Thursday the thirteenth, that's when the headcount's gonna.
I'm on call, thirteen.
Oh, sent me an email last night.
I'm working too.
Well.
So that's.
Yeah, I, I told him I was working that night.
Sent me an email, and that's one of the eleven, school committee the twelfth, and the capital budget meeting on the thirteenth.
How about the seventeenth?
I did that.
Or is that gonna be?
Potentially too late, forty-five days applied.
Okay, so we need to then do it on the twelfth, that we have to do it on the twelfth, we have to do it on the twelfth, okay?
Ball.
Right.
Can we evaluate and vote the same night, on the twelfth?
Yes, we've done that before, yeah, we usually do that, we do it to open the session.
This, so.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, Barbara and I can just come to the committee with our recommendations on.
You know, let me take that back, just you wrote the fourteenth at seven P M, so my thought, he says, Friday, it's Friday the fourteenth, he sent me.
Friday?
So, so it's Friday?
Cause you booked for the fourteenth at seven P M in Town Hall.
Okay, they pay a tenant's, though.
Not a restaurant?
Wait, what is gonna be Friday the fourteenth?
He sent me an email, it said capital was Friday night at fourteen.
Capital, I did.
Okay. That's ridiculous, but anyway.
Yeah, I'm, I'm around, I'll talk with it.
So we could meet, okay.
Doesn't matter to me, I, but I can't do it Thursday.
So why don't, we land on the twelfth, and we're just gonna make out and have to stay later.
You don't have time to, for a, if you, if you need seven days in order to post the public hearing, you can't vote.
Well, it's already been posted for the twelve.
It's already been posted for the twelve.
Yeah.
It's already been posted for the twelve.
So let's get all over, try to put that barrel to the, whatever.
Pedal the metal pedal.
Yes, pedal to the metal, unless they don't.
Well, if you're trying with Barbara and I looking at this and bringing our recommendations, then we can do it.
What? What?
I didn't know if you wanted a meeting beforehand to, to discuss some of the things, and then bring it back to the committee and vote, but.
I mean, would, would the committee, would you, would you only let them come up with a, uh, number that's relatively preserving the, the positions, within the range of where we're looking at from the town,
Yeah. Right.
and vote on, on Wednesday with a meeting beforehand, a public discussion, and then vote as after?
Yeah. Right, a meeting beforehand?
Well, we have the public.
Well, you have a public hearing, and then you're going to the, to the record session, so.
No, public hearing.
Yes, okay, so we're gonna then make the meeting at six thirty?
Six thirty, be right soon, no, it's at seven o'clock.
It was at seven.
Seven, yeah, seven, okay, okay, yeah, I think that since we're not that far apart, I'm optimistic, and I think our business manager knows where we're headed in, in, what our priorities are.
Seven o'clock, I, I came around, I was, sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
From the audience, from.
With the understanding there's no drop in services, the positions will be preserved, and we'll kind of find, it comes down to about seven or eight thousand.
Correct.
Right, and we moderate positions, yes, yeah. We're not that far apart.
Correct, uh, yeah, I think we could do it, I really do, we've done it in the past, where we've been more than that, so, um.
And there's a budget planning meeting on the eleventh.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So I would comment, uh, Mr. McCarthy, one, just come through Barbara, the other thing that we talked about with the senior that we thought you should have in your, um, wheelhouse is, um, he ch, you know, he said, listen, so you're asking for Barbara to just sharpen her pencil,
Yeah.
um, further than the, the eight oh four number, that she was, whether that was rightly or wrongly delivered, that was kind of the, that was the guidance you were given, you were operating off of, what you should have been, so we're, we get that, so he's asking you to, to kind of, um, sharpen your pencil, which I can appreciate. One of the, something else he talked about today was, he jumped out of us to articulate this wrong, was that, um, if, cause we talked about, um, additional monies coming from the state, so that we were like, hey, this potential upside for you, but that will be delivered after the budget gets inked.
Right.
Right.
So what would be something that you should probably, um, talk about is, if you're gonna sharpen your pencil and, and participate in the downside, you want participation in the upside. So when those town, state monies come in, right?
And local receipts.
Right, and the local receipts, right, you're really aggressive, um, ask for, say, I'd great, I can, I can meet you at, at, um, seven twenty-five, but I wanna have commitment in, or however you memorialize that, that when, if there's additional state monies that come in, I wanna participate in that upside in the local receipts, cause he's conservative on his local receipt number, which I get, sixty days on the job, if he runs out of money and comes to, and says layoff teachers, he's gonna get scum-missed. So I, I totally can appreciate that, right, that people will go crazy if that happens.
That'll be the best, the best.
So, so say, hey, no problem, I'm in on, I'm in on the conservative, I'm in and roll it in my sleeves, I'm, I wanna partner with you on this, but I want upside participation, that's, I mean, that's, that's an answer.
I mean, you know, the, the one thing that happened last year was the chapter seventy monies from the nine C cuts that came in, initially were budgeted at what we expected, what we budgeted, coming out of the, the governor's numbers,
Yeah.
we had to cut roughly forty-five thousand dollars, the nine C cuts were restored after the budgets from the, from the governor, so forty-five thousand dollars which were earmarked in, or, chapter seventy,
Right.
went into the town, the school did not see any of those monies.
So we, we flagged that, yeah.
Either split or was, would have been normally directed towards the schools.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, right.
Many municipalities, chapter seventy monies are untouched going into the schools, and that's part of the budget process, that forty-five thousand never surfaced in our budget to free cash.
Yeah. So we, 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 we.
We can't let that happen.
We hit that pretty hard this morning, and that's something that you should make sure you get, it should be memorialized, so that, for, for.
I mean, that, that's, yeah.
Right.
I mean, you know, the, the other, the other approach would be in a special town meeting, go forth with a particular.
That was a good point.
But I urge you to have a special in September, so you need the monies mostly, but you're having, you're missing out.
Right.
Yes, I, I understand that, the, the ways to get a special town meeting proposed are either through the selectmen or through a voter petition, um.
Well, we'd rather do it from a selectman.
I totally agree with you, because I was intimately involved with the voter petition, and I do not wanna do that again.
Yeah. I know you are. Well, we don't have to do that.
Right.
I mean, in the past, we never had these problems, we just automatically did that, but then, when the other funds came in, and if you found, uh, basically, most of the problems were in special ed, because suddenly into August, somebody arrived and you need a hundred thousand, and we, you know, we were getting the money.
Or more, but the concept was talked about, well, I'm trying to be clear and just articulate what I, what I heard this morning, was not a, a special town meeting, this was going to be, this was gonna be predetermined, so.
A new policy.
To a new policy.
Right, I don't know what I'm.
Yeah, and this was just, again, this was.
But I, I, I understand, but, but the initial municipal financing, the way to access the money would be through special town meeting, or through the selectmen, which have some leeway as far as being able to pick appropriate monies.
Yeah, it's different.
You'd have to vote. Right, right.
Majority would be through a special town meeting unless it's, or a regular town meeting.
Right, and again, I think he was just, he was kind of, um, real time thinking a little bit about this concept about, hey, maybe we have a policy vote at, at the upcoming time, which defines it a bit better, whether it's local receipts, so I think he was, it was fluid, but just some of you.
And, and what tends to be the problem is that, you know, New York state law is different from Commonwealth law, and so municipal finances are a little bit different than what occurs in New York state, so.
Yeah, well, my expectations, he'll get that, to be really sure before he.
Washington law.
Well, then also the advisory board.
Yes, the, the thing is.
They have to, a hundred, I don't know whether they have a hundred, they usually have a hundred thousand, they maybe have a high amount, cause you see, I don't know what's happening with the final budget we have to come up with, and you, you can ask for transfers, and I know that you've transferred to the school board. So there's, there's ways of getting some money, I, I don't think you should worry.
We'll work this out. We're on top of it.
I'm not worried at all, I'm, I'm confident in this team right here.
Because we all wonder, we make it to school.
And I'm not worried at all either, but I would just like to say, I didn't hear in that, when you were discussing it originally, I just, I didn't hear Mrs. Cataldo say that team chairs were all so stoned, we talked about the.
Yeah.
All the staff.
Yeah.
They're still there.
Okay, you didn't hear it, just didn't want it to be transparency, you know, I wanna hear it.
Totally.
Yeah.
That's okay. They're in writing in the budget book, it says it right there, on page, whatever.
Correct. I just, I had to make sure, uh, I don't know, everybody's like looking at me, but, and, and I can appreciate everyone saying, you know, can we cut you here and, and burn spending, and I can appreciate that, but also, um, looking at, um, the fact that, when you brought up, and I wasn't here for it, but I'm assuming you brought Miss Valani.
That's next meeting.
Okay, okay, well, then I will.
Sorry.
When you're that close to meeting, that's really no problem.
I'm not really worried.
Right.
Having done many municipal budgets of all sorts in, in the state and here, and I, I think, I'm glad to hear how we've come to that, I.
Right. We'll come up with something.
Well, it might be helpful, again, to work for that before your vote is just up against.
Yeah, I have, no, I was, I think Adrian had a hand up.
Hmm.
Um, yeah, I think the eighty thousand number is very close, and really, it's, that's not really a big deal.
Correct, in history.
Right. Uh, and I wasn't suggesting cuts, but I was saying add back, but tuition, revenue, I said add, I would never go, um, so the other thing is, is that, just for how things flow,
No, I. Right. No, and that's.
When they, when you talk with the town manager, and they, they can't make any bargaining with the town manager, and the town manager doesn't hold the purse strings, the advisory holds and the selectmen holds the purse strings.
We can, if, if the monies run out, we can shut down the town, everybody, it's no problem.
They're the ones. Right. But, but it concerns the.
Now we don't want.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
Well, absolutely. Every seated member now is supportive of the space. The chair, the chair. The chair of advisory, though, not sure, you might wanna check into this, I'm not sure he should actually be participating in talks about the school budget, because his wife works for the school.
No, 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 no.
Yes, I, I know, but he has to disclose.
I know that. Yeah, but he's, he's working with numbers.
I'm just, should we have the conflict interest, I'm just saying.
I, I, you guys. I, I know, he runs, he runs, he runs the meeting, the chair runs it, we have all the members to do the voting, and as a chair or a committee, you're, you usually don't throw unless you break a chop tie.
Peter's the chair. Right.
So I, I, I think it's.
Well, no, I'm just saying, I think it should be disclosed in the shooting number.
Well, I, I think everybody knows.
Yeah, two and sixteen.
Anyway, uh, uh, Ms., uh, Mr. Chair, uh, are we, are we, uh, all the folks that are here, the board, the next, yes.
Yeah, right, yeah. Well, I, I think at this point, we'll go forward with the planned meeting.
Okay.
Twelve.
Are we all done with the meeting?
So meeting on the twelfth?
Yeah.
There's a flooring project.
So.
Did you say we're meeting on the twelfth then, or are we adding a meeting on?
No, no, I don't think.
So the meeting on the twelfth is.
The twelfth, we're, we're set with the twelfth, so, we will get the big, what they've done with the twelfth, um, the committee requested we come up with a budget that's got to be seven, was it seven twenty?
So many dates were.
You'll be able to hold the.
Project seven twenty.
Seven twenty.
Okay, is the flooring project on?
And then, um, the next thing up is the, uh.
I just asked the committee, we're, um, on the twelfth, now, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of when I'm gonna be able to get the book updated and so forth, is Monday too late to get to the budget book?
Oh, that's time is in there.
Monday, yeah, okay, it's just.
Okay, I mean, we, you know what we're trying to get to, the number of.
Yeah, I, I'd like a book that's real, cause my last book wasn't real, so, and it, this packet was kinda, this packet was a little disjointed, so.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I take some, um, guilt for that, because I was working the week before, and it was a late night on Thursday, so I did not get a chance to speak to the superintendent until Friday, so I asked to have the agenda posted, so we have it available, at least in the outline format, and have it updated on Monday, so you can criticize me for that, um, and there's the, the, the.
Anyway, are we doing flooring, I read the whole thing.
About the thirty, oh, no, sixteen, seven, thirty-eight.
Okay.
And, yes, I read the whole, and I, and I agree that, um, I get the, we're the exact same.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
So do you all agree?
Also.
Two, five.
That's come out, yeah.
Yes. Yes, we're talking flooring, is it?
We're not just the.
Sorry, was that, sorry.
We talked flooring and flooring.
Sure, yeah, I have the flooring, yeah, David's gonna mention the flooring.
Okay, I, yes, you mentioned flooring, I read the whole thing, and I agree that we should use the same company and, and they just.
Okay. So you agree with the, the same product, so that it matches what we have already, it won't discourage any competition, um, because everybody has.
The same product should be.
The same product.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Everybody has access to the same material.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, but this has to go for, um, it's not the same, we have to put it up. It's the product.
But we have to, the back, after the second page is the actual bid that will go up, um, to, to advertise.
A bid. Yeah, we have to put it in. So we've used the same, the same product, and a lot of companies have it, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So I don't know if we need to take a vote and go up to bid, or vote to.
No, I don't think so. We do.
I think we need to vote.
Cause you're spending that.
Yeah, there's a, RP or any other bid, yes.
These'll be using the insurance funds still, the remaining.
So this is the, the funding we already have, um, from the settlement, yes.
But we will be spending it, so.
So I'd like to make, um.
So I make a motion that, um, the recommendations as described in the flooring, so, the middle high school flooring replacement project?
Project name. Yes.
Is there a second?
I second.
And as this is probably a, um, a roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call.
That's a roll call.
I made a motion.
I'm hearing it, look over.
I, Paul, you're being.
I, Paul, you're being.
I, Gina Stino.
I, Helene.
The indication is speed.
I think we're all, we're all close.
Yeah, there is, there is reason, there is reason to go into the case.
Yes, I had sent you an email, and then notified you at last week's meeting, but we do have an executive session tonight, um, we'll be returning to open session afterward.
And it's, uh, to conduct a stronger session, preparation, negotiations, and non-union personnel.
With union.
With, uh, I'm sorry, with union personnel, um, with respect to bargaining for litigation, if you remember.
So we're going in the other room, right?
Yes, but I think you're to vote first.
Yes.
Yeah, I vote first, I'll write the exact one, so we, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll.
Okay, we're voting?
Uh, to discuss, to discuss, to discuss, to collect a bargain of litigation.
Okay, I may, um, I support that, I make a motion?
Yeah, you'll do it.
And if somebody's second?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, on paper?
I.
I.
Uh, roll call.
I, Helene.
I, Gina Stino.
I, Paul, you're being.
I'm hearing it, look over.
And we will only exit to adjourn.
Yes.
So what I'm going to ask is that the committee. So what I'm going to ask is that the committee go in and then I'll have Mrs. Deckerial talk to come in in a couple of minutes.
You're gonna have who coming?